Meeting Board of September 24th. This is our sixth meeting of Fiscal 2016. My name is Emily Innes. I'm the Chair, and I will ask the other members to introduce themselves.
Alex Whiteside, I'm a member.
Michael Kelly, member.
Liam Clark, Planning Director.
Julia Getman, Clerk.
Tim Czerwinski, Assistant Town Planner.
Brian Fers, Member.
Cheryl Togias, Member.
Just to let you all know that this is being both recorded and broadcast live. So I'm going to run through today's agenda so everybody knows what's happening. Our next meeting's dates are October 8th, October 22nd, and October 26th. That is the Night of Town Meeting. We will be discussing the approval of past minutes. Next on the agenda is Citizens Speak. Under New Business, we have an informational presentation for 591 Blue Hill Avenue, and an Approval Not Required Application for 106 Hillside Street. Our public hearing for the Thayer Nursery Special Permit and Site Plan Approval will begin at 7:15. This is continued from September 10th. Under Old Businesses, we have the zoning articles for October 2015, and for the May-October 2016 town meetings, and a discussion of the Master Plan Implementation Committee members, the process for appointing them. At the moment, I'm going to ask that we hold off on approval of the past minutes so we can move directly to Citizens Speak. For Citizens Speak, I'll recognize people from the audience who want to speak. If you come forward, sit in the chair and give your name and address into the microphone. If you want to speak on any of the items that are on our agenda, so 591 Blue Hill Avenue, 106 Hillside Street, or Thayer Nursery, I ask that you wait until we get to those points on our agenda. Otherwise, please come forward and speak now.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Dr. Donna Jones. I'm coming to talk to you about the Brushwood Estates' construction. I live in the property 207 Beacon Street that abuts the Brushwood Estates. I brought this in reference to a new construction scheduled to commence at the Brushwood Estates. It's a gated community adjacent to my property at 207 Beacon Street. My property is separated by a fence from the estates where I've resided with my family for the past 18 years. In the past week, the builder and developer of the new construction at Brushwood was instructed to open a fence and replace it with a chain link fence in preparation to use the section as an access gate for construction vehicles to the Brushwood Estates. My understanding is this is based on an assumption that a dirt pathway between 220 Beacon Street and 207 Beacon Street is a continuation of the public road, Beacon Street. The public road ends at the foot of the driveway at 207 Beacon Street. In researching this information over a decade ago, my husband, a civil engineer, went to Town Hall to discuss a proposal to build a cottage on our property for my mother. We were told by the engineer at that time that Beacon Street ends at the driveway. There would not be enough frontage or access for emergency vehicles because there was not a continuation of the public road. In reviewing maps of the property, the road ends. Indeed, there is no continuation, and the area in question is a private passageway, not a public throughway. In other words, the builder is trespassing. This morning, at 8:15, I went out in front of my home, and there were three trucks there prepared to cut down trees to make room for the construction vehicles to come through. So there are two things that have been done without permission on private property, which is to put up a chain link fence and to have tree people come and start cutting down trees. The Brushwood Estates has two entrances and an area for access to the construction zone behind the tennis courts. They have two open entrances, one on Smith Road, one on Brushhill Road, and in looking, there's a closed entrance on Brushhill Road. So there's no logical reason that construction vehicles would need to be driven through a densely settled neighborhood and through private property to break a new entrance way. The trees they are proposing be sacrificed are on our property. There are children playing ball and walking home from school on Beacon Street with a sidewalk only on one side, so they are often in the street playing football, et cetera. It's not a place for construction vehicles. The original purchase of 207 Beacon Street was purposefully done to have a peaceful existence. Our Brushwood neighbors have made it clear they want their community to be exclusive and private. They're willing to sacrifice others for their convenience. The developer bought the land from Brushwood Estates at great cost. The money from the sale was used to improve the estates, and now they're rerouting the construction vehicles through the adjacent neighborhood because construction noise and traffic is inconvenient for them. The maps clearly show the road ends at the driveway at 207 Beacon Street. The street sweepers and the plows stop where the road stops on the map. I stand with the residents of the Beacon Street community, and as the owner of the property, against the continuation of any further advancement in attempting to utilize our neighborhood as a construction zone. In addition, we are firm in our stand that Brushwood Estates repair the fence, redirect the construction through their own property, and the entrance available to their private community. And it's signed Donna L. Jones, Owner, 207 Beacon Street, Milton, Massachusetts. So I thank you for your attention. There is one other item. If you would like, I will give it with a copy of the letter, and it talks about the definition of a paper street, and how that applies in the state of Massachusetts. It's not unprecedented that this has come up before in subdivisions, et cetera. And 220 Beacon Street and 207 Beacon Street, my house has the frontage that abuts the road that they're considering to be a private road, and there is a paper road that they're saying goes up, which is actually in my backyard. I'll send a copy of that around. 220 Beacon Street is directly across from me, and the two roads share this dirt passageway. A large part of that dirt road belongs to 220. A small part belongs to 207. If they are using a truck to go through that, they are trespassing on both of our properties. At 220 Beacon Street, and she will also talk, if she does get up to talk, about flooding that's happened in her property that is a direct result of what they're doing at Brushwood Estates. It also states in the Massachusetts law that if you have two abutters on this particular piece of land or pathway, that we have the right to refuse or fight any permits for them to use that pathway. So we directly own the pathway. If anybody would like to look at these other components of this, I will send that around, as well as a copy of the lever, because I have copies of my own. So I thank you again for your attention.
Thank you very much.
And I'll leave it open for others.
Thank you very much. Can I just ask, how many people are here to speak on this issue? Okay? And how many are here who are interested but not necessarily speaking? Okay. Let me, before everybody else comes up to speak, I don't want to cut off, and I'm happy to have you come forward, but I want to just give you all some information so you know. And then I'll recognize Alex as well, and probably Bill, too, if he wants to just add something. The Planning Board has not yet issued our decision on this. So any work that is being done is being done without the authorization of the Planning Board, because we have not yet issued our decision. My understanding is that the town has not granted any access rights to this. They have not granted permission to cut any trees on town-owned property. And the building inspector, or the building commissioner, rather, has been down there. The Director of Planning, Bill Clark, is also taking a personal interest in this. But the Planning Board has not granted any authority. The site plan approval, when it's drafted, and we're not expecting to take the site plan approval up until our next meeting, but it will identify the specific trees to be cut. Those trees are only, the only trees that we would be authorizing are ones that are on Brushwood's own property. So just to let you all know that. Alex, do you have anything else you want to add before we let anyone else speak?
I was going to say that we are, this is on our agenda on October 5th.
That's right.
We're going to be, and
8th.
October 8th, and we're going to be discussing the site plan approval. And obviously, we're going to be discussing how the site is going to be accessed.
Yes.
And whether it's going to be accessed.
Where it will be accessed.
And where it will be accessed. And I think that, I think that the people who want to speak tonight might consider holding their fire until next time.
You absolutely have the option to speak tonight. That's why we have Citizens Speak. But if you'd rather speak on October 8th, when not only will we be discussing the site plan approval, but the applicant will also be there, you're welcome to hold your comments tonight and come back on the 8th. So Bill, did you have something you wanted to add? And then I'll recognize other speakers at that point.
Building Commissioner and I had a discussion with the developer this afternoon. He is well aware that, you know, he was coming in the wrong way. He was told something by the condo association, and he since has been told how he really will be coming in. He understands that. He agrees with that. And I already told him that I would go to the site with him to figure out where everything is going to be going. We don't have the hammer. The building inspector does. This building inspector has no intention of letting any permit be issued until the site plan approval is released.
So having said that, does anybody else wish to speak tonight to this issue? So, yes ma'am, I saw your hand first, and then sir, I saw you after that. Yes, please come forward. And just again, your name and address into the mic. Oops. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Linda Meach. I live at 188 Beacon Street, where my parents bought in 1927, and I have lived there for 70 years. Seven zero. I would like assurances that even though the builder knows he's not supposed to do it, he won't do it, because this morning, he also knew, but he was there, or his trucks were there, to cut down the tree in spite of knowing that he shouldn't be doing it. So how can we know? Should we have a neighborhood vigilante team taking turns watching? What should we do? Really, I don't know what to do.
They're under a cease and desist by the building.
They are. Is that a legal document? Please tell me. That will really, really stop them?
That's going to stop them. He's not going to build anything until the building inspector.
Did you speak to him after this morning?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Please, please.
No trees, no nothing.
And I would not suggest a vigilante group of any sort.
So I don't have to be looking for barrels and chains and locks, right?
No. But if anything else does happen, if you are concerned about anything, right now, the enforcement is with the building commissioner's office, so that would be the place to call.
Because, you know, I did call the police to ask them about it.
Yes.
And they said, well, it's not our deal. It's a civil deal.
Yes.
Go to the planning board.
Not us yet. It's actually the building commissioner. And again, you are more than welcome to come back on the
Our recourse, if we saw the trucks come up tomorrow morning, would be to call you folks.
No, the building inspector.
The building inspector.
We have no enforcement powers, especially because we haven't yet issued the site plan approval decision.
But the building inspector would help us out and would come down and stop them.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Alex, you wanted to add something?
I'd like to add that if the builder, not having received site plan approval, goes in and, having been told to cease and desist and does something, it's quite unlikely that the builder will ever get site plan approval.
So there is some recourse.
Mr. Clark is also someone who you can call.
Is that true, Bill? Are you seconding that, Bill? Or are you kind of? Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Really, we all appreciate your help. That's a beautiful community we have here. We don't want to see it spoiled. And you wouldn't if you lived with us either. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak at Citizens Speak on this? I saw, yes, you first, and then you, ma'am. I saw you back there.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Wilkinson. I live at 1999 Beacon Street, and was a town meeting member for 20 years until this spring. And you know me as a vigilante and rabble-rouser. But actually, I was one of the people on the street this morning when the trucks were there. And I just want to reemphasize, kind of our lasting concern about this and lack of faith in the official arrangement that you've just outlined. We're heartened by it. We appreciate it. But we hope that you will arrange extra vigilance, because a person operating as this developer did is frankly not to be trusted. So thank you very much for the action that you've taken, and we don't want to have to be out there on the street, literally, again, to have to stop that kind of thing. They already took down cedar fence and put up a chain link fence. We're not clear about how they had the authority to do that either, so we're not sure what they're prepared to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Kelly Gallagher, and I live at 19 Beacon Street Circle. I don't have anything as planned as my neighbors and as detailed at all, but I just wanted to make sure that our, my neighbors who just spoke directly about this property, but we're very close, too. And there's many of us here tonight who, while we don't directly abut the property, do believe we, our quality of life will be deeply impacted. And we're left with just the wonder of why this, and you've already addressed it, so I understand it, but just for the record, I support what my neighbors already spoke about. And the lingering question is, why aren't they doing it to the already previously opened areas they have? The gates on Brushhill Road and Smith Road that we see open, shut, closed all the time. And, you know, they are our neighbors. Even though they've chosen to have a gated community, they, their actions are affecting their neighbors. We're still neighbors whether there's a gate or there isn't a gate. So I just want to, you know, note that for the record.
Great.
Okay? So even though we're not right next to the property, we really, really feel our lives will be impacted. Okay?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Linda Parslow. I live at 220 Beacon Street. And on Monday afternoon, I personally spoke with Pat McKenna, the developer, who talked about his financial distress, and that this project was supposed to start in March. And he looked at the chain link fence and said, so can I ask you one more time, can we have access? And I said, absolutely not. Yet. The trucks, I was home today when all this occurred, but I was in the shower, and all the trucks pulled in, and they were all ready to take action.
Okay.
So I personally faced to face with the developer on Monday.
Okay. Thank you very much. We will pass all of this information back to the building commissioner as well. I mean, I'm sure he knows it.
Okay.
But we will reinforce that, that you did not give permission, and the concerns of the people who have spoken today. I think the point about extra vigilance is a good one, and we'll pass that back.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am at 84 Beacon Street Circle. I am the mother of a three-year-old and a six-year-old and a town meeting member. And I did get notification about the hearings for this project, and I understood that it was happening within the community, of the gated community. I'm concerned that I did not realize that they were going to be accessing the community over private property next to my house, where I have young children, and I'm a little bit worried about the safety. I'm glad to hear that there's going to be a site plan approval. I just wanted to clarify, because I heard two dates, the 5th and the 8th.
It's the 8th.
The 8th, okay. And the developer will be here on that night?
I would assume so, yes.
So if you want to speak any further to that, that would be the day to do it?
What? Yes, I'm getting to that.
Okay.
Sorry. He was reminding me to remind you to give your name for the record.
Emily Speck. Thank you.
So, yes. And again, I would encourage all of you to come back on the 8th, so that he can hear your comments. We've noted on the board that pictures are quite often useful as well. Should you have any further incidents, which we devoutly hope that you don't, but if you do, pictures are useful.
And any communication with the developer should also remind him to communicate with other contractors and other outside organizations, because I think the trucks that were there today, which were the ones that I went out and spoke to, were not, they were an outside organization that had been hired to do a separate job, and they had been not given clear instructions about what they should do.
Okay.
And so he may be like, oh, I'm going to stop, but then if he's hired somebody else who's showing up, someone needs to remind him that nobody can come through that way, not just himself or his trucks.
That's a good point.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're next, sir. Come forward.
Hi. I'm Tom Denley from 16 Beacon Street Circle. This area is right around the corner from us. I'd like to say you have a planning board, you have a clerk who's working for you. I would love to ask you to please direct a letter from the planning board, say to the developer, put the fence back, put everything the way you left it. And please, you can't do anything until you have been approved of. I would like to see that come from you, so he knows that he's on call. Not that he has gotten a telephone call. I would love to see this go registered mail, so you could absolutely track it, make sure this man doesn't go too far. You understand, he knew that he had no access. The owner of 220 Beacon had said to him, no, you can't. He decided he could. I think you have to take the bull by the horns and say, hey, stop.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, baby.
Yes, sir.
Hi.
Welcome.
Welcome. My name is Melvin James, and I live at 206 Beacon Street. I'm making a passionate speech for the children. We don't have sidewalks in all the areas where we live. The community, the streets, is part of how we socialize. This is about the children with me. You know, a lot of good points been made, but when I look out my window and I see the kids sledding, rollerblading, when I see people walking, animals, it's a walking community. Children, socialized on the streets, you know? We know where they are. People all the time, walking through our community. Sending trucks through our community would destroy it. It really would. And I came here 16 years ago with open arms, and my arms are open to my friends back here. But one thing I don't want to see happen is that the children that we have there, the adults that we have walking, the dogs, the community destroyed by trucks, you know? A lot of good points been made. I won't reiterate that, but it's important that our community remains whole for the children to the future. That's what we're doing this for.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? So if not, thank you all for coming. We, oh, I'm sorry, sir, I didn't see your hand.
Yeah, not for the Brushhill, I don't have any more.
Oh, let me finish off with the Brushhill. Yes.
May I ask a question? You didn't answer me.
No, I will have to take that up with
Did you send a letter or not?
I'll take that up with the other members of the board later on in our agenda, so that we don't normally do
Do you want to stay to wait for this?
I had, the board members should have a say on the letter, yes. I don't, I try not to be dictatorial. So, but we don't normally do board discussion during Citizens Speak because of the other items on our agenda. So I promise, I've made a note to bring it up with the board at the end of our meeting. So that is the best I can do at the moment. But I have not forgotten. I will make sure.
Will you follow the people at 220 and 209 Beacon Street and tell them what you agreed to?
I will ask the planning staff to inform people. Do we have your contact information, ma'am? Did you put that on the letter?
I can't leave it there. I just have the address, but I didn't leave it.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. We will follow up on that. Thank you. So, so let me finish off with this, sir, and then I'll recognize you for Citizens Speak. So again, thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate them. We will be taking up this matter at our next meeting on October 8th. I urge you all, if you want to make further comments or hear the board's discussion, to please come to that meeting. So, but we do appreciate your input tonight, and we will follow up on it and make sure that, to the best of our ability as a board, that we can track what's happening and work with the building inspector to make sure that the unauthorized actions are not continuing. So thank you for letting us know. Sir, you wish to speak on another matter?
My name is Patrick Greeley. I live at 149 Bradley Road. I've been a resident for 53 years. My family's been there over 60. I just have two issues I have. The St. Pius X property, I actually had a conversation with Mr. Clark on the phone the other day, and we were talking about, I haven't had a chance to speak, I tried to last time, but I had to go to work, that the truck now traffic that's going to be going to that job, now, we are still in the midst of a three-year job on the other end of Brushhill Road, of Fairmount Ave, that we were told that the trucks would be split between Bradley Road, Robin Street, Vocil Road, which never happened. Everything that went up to that job site came down Bradley Road. Every single one. Now, Mr. Clark is saying that this job now, that's at St. Pius X, that the truck traffic will be split between Bradley Road again and Milton Street. Now, if the trucks are coming off of 128, you'd get on the Ponson Valley Parkway, you'd follow the Ponson Valley Parkway to the bottom of Brushhill Road, and get onto Brushhill Road that way. I mean, no offense to the people on Brushhill Road, but we've already gone through now three years of this other traffic, constant traffic. It is a no-truck street, Bradley Road and Milton Street, and we have constant cut-through traffic of trucks, 25 per day, that don't get stopped, even though there's four signs to on each end of the street. And they still cut through constantly. The road's probably one of the dangerous roads in the town. 70% of that road has 25-foot drop-offs on each side. So now, you come down that street, and you have a 10-wheeler coming down with 45,000 pounds. Some of the concrete trucks are going to 75,000 pounds. That street's not made for that, especially that area. I mean, one of these days, someone's going to come down the street, and it's not going to be there. It already has washed out a few times over the years, at least two or three times. So what the people of Bradley Road are asking is to keep the truck traffic of that construction job off the street. Now, today, we had dueling trucks going down. We had the trucks still going up to the other job that's not finished yet, and now we have the St. Pius job coming in the same way. So actually, two of the trucks today actually had to pull mirrors in to get by each other on the street. Now, the people do walk on the street. God love them for doing it, because it's crazy to do it, because it's, they're going 65 miles an hour, some of the college kids on that street. Easy. And the second comment I have is, I understand, I know the zoning articles have been sort of kiboshed, but the, two of the articles that were brought in to, to the planning board were from a citizen's petition that my area put in. And we put in because of the light system at the college that was put up between, without anyone, anybody's notice. There was no plans, there was no permits pulled, there was no height restrictions looked at, as 83-foot poles went up 100 yards off of people's property lines. In comparison to the, to the light systems at Milton High School, which has 40 lights, Curry College has 132 lights. Okay? And lights up the same 100 yards as Milton High School plays on. But Milton High School actually has a track, a pit, shot put area, all, still lit up by those 40 lights. If you take all those lights that are in the parking lot and the lower fields at the high school, still doesn't come up the amount that Curry has to light up their 100 yards. And what really upset us as a community that abuts that is when it got to, when it came to putting in these articles, the lighting article, and also the, I don't know what you guys were calling it now, the music or
Amplified music.
Amplified music. Before the poles went up in 2004, the neighborhood saw the first stanchion go in the ground. So the, automatically, we went up. Now, this is a dog for another fight here, unfortunately, for another board, so I'm not going to get into it too much. But what, we started arguing in 2004 because of what was happening to us. And the town turned a blind eye, and has to this day, until we finally brought it up to citizens, to a citizen's petition that went through a unanimous decision at the Warren Committee, and then the town meeting, to a unanimous decision at town meeting, to have something done to help our properties. And the first articles that come out, now that I'm hearing is, you're trying to say that they're grandfathered in. There's nothing There's nothing grandfathered in at Curry College. The only thing that's grandfathered in is the community that was there long before Curry College ever stepped foot on that property. So the grandfather, for anybody to sit here and tell me that anything is grandfathered in because the town has turned a blind eye to it for 10 solid years and not done one thing, not one change has been made, it's a joke. It's really a joke. And it sort of gets under our skin a tad, you know? When you've been living there that long, you should have rights to be able to go out in your backyard without, I have tapes, I have, we have gone to 15 different colleges, above Curry's division, and even high schools, and even in their own division, no one even comes close to this lighting system. It's absurd. It's ridiculous, because they don't want to just light up the 100 yards, they want to light up the other areas that are next to the, you have people practicing at 10:00 at night, seven feet off of a property line, 20 feet from somebody's house, you have 50 kids yelling and screaming at 10:00 at night. It's absurd, it's ridiculous. I mean, we're paying taxes, for what? They run the, they run the show up there, there's no question about it. So the next time these articles come up, there was nothing about any kind of timing on how long they could have them on, how, you know, they're on seven nights a week. Even when they're not on the field, the lights are on. You call them and say, you know, geez, you know, we're already, my whole back of my house, four rooms of my house are lit up. You don't even have, my neighbors is even worse, some people on Atherton Street are even worse. I have, I think I showed you, and you came up-
You did.
On my phone. I'm standing inside my house, and you can hear that music like it's outside your door. So you sit here right now, and there's 50 kids a door over from you screaming bloody murder at 10:00 at night. Now, there's young kids in that area that we have to put up with this. So these articles need to be written, but they need to be written because of this college, because there's no other entity in this town that's as abusive as this is right now. So I want to make sure that it's on the record that, you know, grandfather clause doesn't even come close, especially now when I see there's a pole being moved in East Milton Square that was there for, since 1950, the permits were, now it rescinded, you know, 'cause of no grandfather clause for the gas station, right? For the pole that was in there now, right? 1950, that pole went in. But now, all of a sudden, it's not grandfathered in, it's rescinded, and now the guy's gotta start from scratch. Sounds a little fishy to me.
So, I want to thank you for bringing the zoning forward, because although those zoning articles did not go forward for October, later on at our meeting tonight, we'll be discussing what goes forward for May. So it was very timely.
Okay.
On the truck traffic, that was the first I've heard of it, so I'm going to talk to Bill after the meeting-
Okay.
And find out what's going on.
Yeah, I mean, it's just not fair. I mean, it's ridiculous.
Appreciate you bringing that in.
It's outrageous. I mean, you're talking about over 100 trucks a day. I mean, I mean, a week, excuse me, a week, that are going up and down. So it's crazy.
So thank you very much for bringing that forward.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Anybody else for Citizen Speak? All right. In that case, we are going to move to, now, we were going to move to the public hearing at 7:15, and we have gone past 7:15, but for important reasons. The Thayer, we have two items that we're going to take before you, because we were expecting to have a long conversation. You're willing to wait? Okay. And the A and R for 106 Hillside? Do we have an idea, Bill and Tim, how long that's likely to take? Is it a five minute, or is it a half hour?
Five minutes.
Are you all willing to wait five minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. All right. Then let's do, let's do 106 Hillside, and if Paul's willing to wait, we'll take up the 591 after we're done with Thayer. So please, come forward. Introduce yourselves to the record.
Hi, my name is Katrin Januit, and I live at 106 Hillside Street.
Welcome.
I'm Peter Tuttle from Grady Consulting, 71 Evergreen Street, Kingston.
So, Bill, if you want to-
Their plan is to take a 60-by approximately 158-foot lot, it's a 9,394 square-foot lot. They're buying X amount of land from Henry Thomas, combining it with their, their own lot at 106 Hillside. Just duplicate something that St. Property Owners did in 2005, and they bought 50-foot wide parcel. They're just extending the yard by 9,394 square feet.
And it looks pretty good.
Yeah.
Other than the fact, what is that road on it, Phil? Park Avenue. They show something called Brook Avenue, which is called private variable width, and Brook Avenue is simply a paper street.
Okay.
So we're going to add a comment.
Number eight?
Probably under Brook Avenue.
Okay.
Saying Brook Avenue is a paper street and does not provide frontage.
Want me to add that?
Add that to right under where, and take out a private variable width. You could say private, but it isn't a variable width, it is no width.
Okay.
It's just a paper street.
I'm missing it.
And so-
So at the bottom, the bottom where it says Brook Avenue, that's, that's a paper street. Okay.
Want me to write it right on the Mylar?
I'm not sure the district should take it if you're writing it.
They should.
Or you can bring it in to Mr. Clark.
Yeah, we can authorize.
Why don't you bring it in to Mr. Clark tomorrow, and he will endorse it. I make a motion there.
Well, before you make a motion, I want to make sure nobody else has any questions. Mike, you're good? Cheryl?
So we're just adding Lot 8, is that what we're doing?
We're, we're, we're taking Lot 8 from Lot 9?
Yes.
And then adding it to 106.
Adding it to 106, right.
Thank you.
I move that we authorize Mr. Clark to endorse this plan as not requiring subdivision approval.
You have a second?
Second.
With the, with the additional notation.
Second. Cheryl, thank you. Any other questions?
Do you want it, private, not constructed, or do you want it paper street?
You could say private, not constructed. And then say this, this, this street does not provide frontage.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So the next item on our agenda is special permit and site plan approval. This is for Thayer Nursery and is continued from September 10th. And if you all remember, we continued it, the board continued it from September 10th for the purpose, for two purposes. One was to allow the applicant to respond to a report from Kavanaugh Tochi Associates that had been provided by one of the abutters, or a set of the abutters. And the second person was to allow those same abutters to provide the board with a report from Eaglebrook, and then allow the response from the applicant. So the only subjects that will be discussed during the public hearing will be the noise, which is the Kavanaugh Tochi associate report, and the applicant's response, and the drainage, which is the Eaglebrook report and the applicant's response. Because the board had voted to keep the public hearing solely for, open solely for those items, those two are the only items that will be discussed tonight during the public hearing. Now, our normal process is that we get a report from staff on the outstanding items and new information received. I've just given that on the staff's behalf. We'll get an update from the applicant on these outstanding items. They'll take questions from the board members, and then we'll take testimony from members of the public, and move from there. I am expecting, based on the board's vote, that we will be closing the public hearing tonight, and then the board will be moving to discussing, beginning our deliberations and discussing that draft order of conditions that we handed out last time. I would expect that the likelihood is that we would continue our discussion of the draft order of conditions to October 8th, because it's quite large. I don't expect that we'll get through it all tonight, and then discuss that and further items, depending on what the board decides. But again, tonight, we are only discussing in the public hearing drainage and noise, and that's it. Mr. Corcoran, do you have anything on drainage and noise for your client tonight?
Yeah, yes, thank you, and that's Jim Burke. Join me, for the record, Ned Corcoran, counsel to Thayer. Maggie and Josh Oldfield at Thayer Nursery. I'm joining up Jim Burke. I know that Mr. Burke prepared a response to the drainage work that was done by Mr. Rowan Johanning's drainage expert, and he's modified some plans accordingly. I think that material was submitted to the board.
It was, and I have given permission to their drainage expert to be able to, Mr. Giuliano, to present his information. You may want to respond to him rather than speaking now, so that it moves-
Yeah, that works for me.
And that would be during the public hearing portion, or the public comment portion of that, that he would be able to speak, and then you would be able to make your response at that time, or you can present now, but it might be better.
However, however you'd like to handle that.
I think that might be the, the better way of doing it. I don't know if you want to go ahead and respond to the noise at this point.
With respect to the noise, we have a brief memo that we forwarded to Bill. Came in this week from Josh and Maggie's technical consultant, Ascentec, who had issued a previous report, simply in their opinion, is suggesting that the noise barriers that are proposed will result in lower overall sound levels to properties around it, and I think it's pretty straightforward. It doesn't get into a whole lot of technical response to different issues, it's just, new fence with sound attenuation is gonna work, it's gonna dramatically reduce the volume of noise.
Excellent. Board members, any questions? You've had a chance to read all of the reports. As I've said, Mr. Giuliano from Eaglebrook, during the public comment portion, will be allowed to make a presentation of his findings. You've had the Kavanaugh Tochi and the responses in your packets. Any questions at this point?
At this break.
Okay. All right. Well, in that case, I'm going to open it up for the public comment portion. I'll read the regular rules. You guys will want to sit back for a little bit. So the reminder for the public testimony, wait to be recognized before speaking, come to the table and give your name and address, speak into the microphone. When you are done, please leave the table. All questions or comments must be directed to the chair. Speakers may not cross-examine applicant, board members, or other speakers. Applicant will be asked to respond to questions at the end of the public input session. In this case, because the hearing is for drainage, I'm going to have Mr. Giuliano speak first, and allow the applicant to respond, and then that gives members of the public the chance to respond to both sides on the drainage. So is Mr. Giuliano here? Yep, there you are. Please come forward, and of course, introduce yourself to the record.
Your fellow record, Michael Giuliano with Eaglebrook Engineering from Danvers, Mass. I did receive the revised set of plans on September 21st, so a lot of the issues in my initial letter were addressed. There's just a couple of other issues I would like to discuss with the board in regard to the revised plan.
Okay.
On Sheet 1, on the stone swale, that's the swale that runs parallel to the, so the southerly property line. We saw that during the site visit. They show that to be abandoned, and the concern is, is that it's still, abandoned to me means this is gonna remain in place, and the concern is, that whole area is glacial tilt very tight, and it's filled with stone, 40% voids. It's a conduit for water to flow, surface water and groundwater to flow towards the back, and I like to have it removed as opposed to abandoned. And this, this way, water isn't allowed to freely flow to the back of the Tevens property, and then towards the Johanning Row property. And then, the other comment in regard to the berm, which is actually shown on Sheet 2, is to the, kind of the south, excuse me, the northeast and the southwest, where the, actually, this is Sheet 2 right here.
I was going to say, if you go, take the mic with you.
Yeah. Just to ensure that there's not going to be flow onto the Johanning Row property, is over here and over here is just either with grading or no, just ensure that the berm's gonna encompass the whole length of that property line, because there's kind of, an area here where water could potentially still flow, and there's no notice fire. It looks like the berm stops here with the grading, and I just want to make sure that that doesn't happen. The other thing, too, is, I'd like to have spot grades to ensure that water's gonna flow towards the pond as opposed to pond here, so I don't want any water ponding in the back of the Road Johanning property. Other than that, the other issues that I brought up were addressed, other than, I think I brought up a total suspended solid issue, that's more of a town issue as opposed to a Johanning Row issue, and that's regard to the pond and how it connects to the storm drainage system. And then, I also commented on the control structure for the hydrocath model that they designed, that's still not modeled properly, so what they're showing for peak flows, you know, isn't, isn't correct at this point. Other issues that I brought up were addressed in the revised set of plans and calculations.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Where did you go? Oh, there you are. For some reason, I was looking back there. Come on up, and, and you have your chance to respond.
It'll actually be a fairly quick response. You know, our intent, as talked about in our sidewalk, was to keep all our water onsite and conveyed down to the front, to that detention basin. If I have to add, you know, a couple of, extend some contours and add some spot grades to make it a little more clear for construction, that's certainly not a problem. As far as abandoning the stone swale, you know, we've been watching that stone swale, I don't think it's actually wicking any water whatsoever, but there's certainly, you know, several ways to abandon it, you know, you can excavate up, you know, a section of it and throw in some fairly dense material, clay dam of some sort, but we can certainly come up with a method for that to make sure that it's adequate and not conveying any sort of water. And as far as the outlet, you know, I'll have to talk to the peer review engineer directly about it, because I found what I thought was the error, and I don't want to get, you know, too involved in the aspects of it, but, you know, I modeled it as a vertical orifice of 24-inch, and it's actually a horizontal one, so I toggled it for horizontal. I changed the numbers a little bit, not too much, but specifically, I'd have to talk to them to find out, because I think it's modeled correctly. So, I stand by it, that's all I can say.
Okay. So having had your chances to both address, I'm going to ask you guys to sit back, and then I'll open it up to the public for public comment. Does anybody wish to speak? Yes, Mr. Johanning.
I'm Phil Johanning, 23 Parkwood Drive in Milton. I guess, I, I didn't get a copy of the letter that was referred to about, from Ascentec. Would I be, that's part of the public record, I can request that?
Yes, it's part of the public record. You can request it, absolutely.
Thank you. I guess I, I think that there was a lot of technical information in the report that Kavanaugh Tochi did, Kavanaugh Tochi did, and I, I think that this really doesn't address that. One of the important measurements is the, is the sound baseline, and I don't know whether Ascentec agrees or disagrees with our experts' determination of the, of the sound baseline. And the other thing is that the, the CMR requires that the noise, that when the, the Thayer Nursery is in operation, the noise at the property line cannot be more than 10 decibels above the baseline. And that is something else that Kavanaugh Tochi explained, and it's in 310 CMR 7.10. And so, it's, it's really important to, I mean, this, this doesn't even get at any of those determinations, it doesn't even get at the CMR. It doesn't, so I, I mean, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that this says anything, but I do wonder, is this, do we agree with the baseline, or do we not agree with the baseline? If I get a machine to measure and track the noise at my property line, and it goes above 10 decibels, could that be a problem? And they're, they're just saying the fence will help, but that should be proven, not, not just stated. I mean, how, how is this proven that the fence is helping? Like, at Pam's property line, you know, there's a landcare yard right on the other side, and the guy from Kavanaugh Tochi said that Ascentec's own report said that a bobcat operating drives- drives the noise above that 10 decibel level. And so, and they put, they put their bobcats in specific locations, but in fact, the bobcats travel all around the property. And additionally, there can be multiple machines operating at the same time. So looking at one doesn't really do the job. But even if you just look at one, at a staged location, it, Kavanaugh Tochi's report shows that it goes above 10 decibels. So if you're going to say that, that the fence is going to mitigate that, that seems to me to be something that could be proven or disproven. And I don't think anybody did that. So if I buy a machine and I start tracking the noise levels and they go above 10 decibels over the baseline, it seems to me that's a violation of the CMR. And so, you know, I wonder, then I call the, the building inspector and I show him my printout. You know, this is going to happen because these fences won't work. Kavanaugh Tochi told me they're not going to work. And if you read Acentec's report, it really depends on the, whether the, the noise is low or high, the extent to which the fence is going to actually be effective. And one of the things that Kavanaugh Tochi mentioned to me was that noise travels by sightline. So he said, you know, if you go upstairs in your house, you can see Thayer Nursery. If you can see Thayer Nursery, you can hear Thayer Nursery. So you'd have to have an incredibly tall fence to block the sightline. So I guess I really think that the, the issue of noise really has not been adequately addressed. It really hasn't. We've talked a lot about fences, but it doesn't mean that the fence is actually going to mean that, you know, you're going to get the mitigation that you would need to get to be compliant with 310 CMR 7.10. So I, I think this just is, is a big problem that has not been resolved.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Anybody else wish to speak? This is your last chance. It's the public hearing. All right. In that case, since nobody else is wanting to speak, Ned, do you wish to respond to any of the comments? Once you're done, I'm going to throw it open to the board for any questions they may have. And then we'll have a discussion of whether or not they're prepared to close the public hearing at this point.
No, I think the, the evidence that's presented with respect to noise is adequate. There was an earlier report submitted with the initial plan that addressed the diminution of noise levels based on the, this type of sound attenuating material. That has not been refuted. I guess the question will be at some point, what is the baseline noise? Because the baseline noise, I suppose, is the operation of equipment for nursery purposes. And if there's an increase in that noise level for landscape business, then that increase can only be to a certain degree. But I think the, the evidence is adequate that the fencing will significantly reduce the amount of noise emanating from the property and provide adequate protection. And so, given that, I would ask the board to close the public hearing.
Board members, do you have any questions on what was presented tonight? Yes, Alex.
Well, the engineer said there was something wrong with the structure.
Which?
Mr. Giuliano.
Okay.
And then Mr. Burke said, no, as far as I know, there's nothing wrong with the structure. And I'd be interested to know what's wrong with the structure because, you know, if we should, if it should be changed, it should be changed. So maybe we could get a little more information on.
From both Mr. Giuliano and Mr. Burke?
On that particular, that, the, that particular issue. Just so we can either put it to rest or, or put it to rest.
Fair enough. Anybody else have any particular questions for the two engineers? And we can ask them all at once. If not, Mr. Giuliano and Mr. Burke, would you both come up? And then maybe, Mr. Giuliano, Giuliano, you can explain what you think is incorrect. And Mr. Burke, you can respond. Hopefully, we will understand the technical.
So I understand you're talking about the modeling of the outlet structure? Excuse me, outlet structure? Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Actually, that's on Sheet 3. And then what he's using is a HydroCAD model. And so the bottom pipe is actually a primary. And then all the other two devices actually flow into it. And then if you look at his HydroCAD calculations, it's, has them all as primary. So it's not modeled properly in the HydroCAD model. So the outlet structure has to be revised to reflect what actually, how water actually flows into the bottom pipe.
So you're not necessarily saying that there's anything wrong with the structure? You're saying the numbers you use to calculate?
What I'm saying is there's nothing wrong with the structure, but how you model and what the results are, are incorrect based on how it's detailed on the plan.
All right. I wouldn't necessarily change the structure. I would add another, I would add a reach because that outlet leading out of the structure is going to be modeled as a culvert. And so you'd have to put another, you'd have to put a reach in, into the catch basin, which we can do. That's not a problem.
So you're saying that you can address his overall concerns?
I don't think anything has to be changed. I think it has to be modeled properly so we know what we're looking at. So I don't think anything has to be changed on the, on the structure itself, but how it's modeled has to be changed, excuse me, how its model has to be changed.
Will a difference in the modeling, if, if, if nothing has to be changed on the structure, in your opinion, does that mean it matters whether or not the model?
Right.
You see what I mean? Is, is you're saying the model is, modeling is wrong, but the, the outcome is that he doesn't have to change the structure?
Right. So all these calculations, the results of the calculations of peak flows are all going to change.
Okay. But does that, but you're not saying that has an effect on what he needs to do? Because you just said the structure was okay.
What you're saying is that that 12-inch pipe that's coming out of the bottom of that structure?
Yeah.
Is the constriction. So that possibly constrict and back up and actually cause additional flooding into the pond.
So what's the remedy for that?
Model that particular culvert. And if it does back it up, increase the size of it.
Okay.
Increase the size, the diameter of the structure itself?
Yes. Of the, of the culvert. Or perhaps, I mean, if, you know, maybe you want to use that 12-inch culvert, I'd have to talk to DPW. Maybe they want just a 12-inch pipe coming into the street. So then you'd have to, to make sure that that culvert is not surcharged. And maybe that will provide enough control. I'll have to wait and see what the model does.
Okay.
But it's, you know, I agree, I agree with Michael. You know, it's, you know.
So you're going to remodel it?
Right.
And so if you remodel it, then that is something where you can come back and say, either the model said the structure's fine, or the model says the structure needs to be changed, and this is how I'd change the structure.
Exactly.
And we're done. Okay.
You know, the thing is, you know, the numbers are so radically reduced. I mean, we're dropping the flows considerably in every storm. So I have some leeway with regards to how to control the stormwater.
I'd say the likelihood is we're not going to be finished with looking at the conditions tonight. So there's time for him to come back.
Right. No, I, I think that you look at your modeling and, and you, you're suggesting that the structure probably won't have to be changed, but it may.
And if it dies, you'll let us know.
No, it gets reset. You know, I'm, I think that the, the orifice is going to be the controlling feature of the structure and not the culvert.
All right. Well, get those, get those results in. Get that modeling in.
Any other questions from board members? Thank you both very much for coming up to discuss that.
I'm going to take a reach here.
Any other questions from board members?
I'll tell you what to do.
All right. In that case, do I have board members a motion of any sort? Yes, night.
First, we close the public hearing.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on closing the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And one extension? Okay. All right. So ladies and gentlemen, we have closed the public hearing. Let me remind you what that means. It means that the board has moved into its deliberative process on the conditions that might be attached, that would be attached to a special permit if the board, at the end of its deliberative process, determines that it's just a draft special permit. What that means is that there's no further comment from the public or from the applicant unless the board specifically asks the question of me that I feel best to be met by asking someone else. So what we have just had in front of us is the, we're calling it the draft order of conditions because it has to be named something. But effectively, what it is, is Tim and myself pulling out from the application and the material that we have received throughout this public hearing process, those conditions that the board will want to look at and decide how it wants to, how it would want to impose and what it would want to impose on the applicant as a condition of granting approval. So the first section is the required plans and documents that came from the zoning. And this is just the information that would be on the final plans that are submitted. And obviously, what we would do if, if we granted a special permit was refer specifically to those plans. You can see notes in the, the column. So we've got the required plan, the required information that should be on it, the existing sheet note, sheet number from the application, and then note that they have to be, may have to be resubmitted depending on our, our conditions. You know, Tim, we forgot page numbers on these. But if you go to four, which is one, two, three, four pages, pages in, you'll see conditions of approval. And again, these are draft. Starts off with the definition of the landscaping business and the additional authorized activities. And these are all pulled from the zoning and in the cases of quantities that you see from the application. We then move on to activities that are not authorized by the special permit and site plan approval because obviously, there are some, there are things that the, that have, are happening on the site, such as the nursery business, that this, our decisions would not authorize. This includes, the next section's the allowed hours of operation. We then move into the vehicles and the conditions of operation on the vehicles, storage of materials, deliveries, including delivery operations, parking, lighting, dumpsters, landscaping and fencing, drainage. And I think we end with, effectively end with drainage. So these are the categories of the things that we need to discuss. We can either take them in order, or if you want to take a specific one, certainly drainage and noise have been two issues that we've heard a lot about. Noise in particular is dealt with, you'll have heard, there's not a separate section on noise. That's because it's covered in both vehicle operations and delivery operations because it's affected, noise is created by both of those and that's where it should be affected. It is also, of course, dealt with in the landscaping and fencing as far as the mitigation of noise. So I am open to thoughts by board members as to how they would like to approach this. As I said, this is just really a guide for, for our discussions. It is not meant to be anything final in any way, shape. It's just pulling the information together so we have something to, to work with, basically. So thoughts? If none, I suggest that we start, not with required plans and documents, but start at the beginning with, of conditions of approval, with definition of landscaping business.
Agreed.
Fair enough. All right. So the, the draft text.
I've numbered these pages, one to 13.
Oh, good job.
And I think it would be useful if everyone did the same so that we can.
More easily refer to them.
Know what page that we're talking about.
Good idea. So again, we have this on our agenda. We have the discussion of the zoning articles and we have that presentation. I would suggest we spend an hour on this and then sort of see where we are at the end of the hour, which would take us to about 10 past nine. And then sort of check in and just see how far we've gotten and what we'd like to, what further we might like to accomplish, or if there are things that we need to go and think about prior to our next meeting on the 8th. As I said, I think this will take longer than one night to do. So definition of the landscaping business under conditions of approval starts on page four. The text at the moment, it's A, definition of landscaping business. The landscape business may undertake the following activities as authorized under subsection two, definition of landscaping business permissible activities. The items in italics refer to the original zoning. I is construct, install, and maintain lawns, trees, yards, shrubs, gardens, patios, related grounds, and other outdoor areas which are not owned by the applicants. Two is own or lease real and personal property. And three is employ employees. Then you'll see a table underneath there. That table identifies the business and the 2012 number of employees from the application. Landscaping nursery is Josh Oldfield and nursery landscaping is Maggie Oldfield. In addition, the employees were not named, obviously, because they can change. But what we've done is we've put the number down. So landscaping slash nursery is four employees. Then there are six employees that are specifically to the nursery and seven employees that are specific to landscaping. Does anybody have any comments on this section? I mean, we're not going to vote it section by section. What I'm going to do is identify where there are issues that we need to have discussions. So if there's something we don't need a discussion on, yes, Alex.
We have a definition of landscaping business in section two of the zoning.
This should be from section two of the zoning, but it's worth checking to make sure that it was properly pulled. And most cases, I tried to take the definition that was in the zoning and I've indicated where it's unclear, but... So again, definition of landscaping business permissible activities. Again, for purposes of the subsection, a landscaping business, this is from the zoning itself. A landscaping business is defined as a business concern which operates to construct, install, and maintain lawns, trees, yards, shrubs, gardens, patios, related grounds, and other outdoor areas which are owned by others. The landscaping business may own or lease real and personal property, employ employees, and may be authorized by special permit to own, lease, operate, and store vehicles and equipment reasonably necessary for business operations. And that is later in this order of conditions. We also have later, and that's, that's under B where it says additional authorized activities. So the A has just those first three primary items. Any questions?
Well, I, I, you know, I have to, we've got to make sure that everything is here.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
I think you've tried to get everything here.
Just so I interpret this correctly, that they have 17 employees.
Four, six, seven.
19.
19.
13.
And Josh and Maggie.
Josh and Maggie.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah. 17 total. Yeah. Do you think we should put the total on the table? Does that make it?
No, no. I just, if I interpret it correctly, I think it says.
So then, additional auth, and I, and to Alex's point, I would encourage you, as we go through and I identify that such and such came from the zoning, you know, feel free to go back and check to make sure that we have accurately pulled it. When you have multiple authors on something, it's always worth checking. So B, additional authorized activities, that's where the next part of that paragraph comes. The planning board may authorize under this special permit the following activities. So one, own, lease, operate, and store vehicles and equipment reasonably necessary for business operations. You'll see my comment on this page that actually now refers to a later part of the document. Two, it says sell trees, shrubs, sods, seam, loam, mulch, that should say mulch, not much, and related material. We've listed the materials. This list, this table comes from the application. So it's listed the materials and then the 2012 total volume. It's noted that this volume is in cubic yards and annually. So we have the nutra mulch at 3,300 cubic yards, hemlock mulch at 1,000 cubic yards, playground trips, chips at 350 cubic yards, and loam at 1,500 cubic yards. And then this flips over to the next page. Nutrisoil at 1,500, organic grow compost at 2,000, and sand at 500. And again, those come from the application.
These are all quantity, annual, total annual.
Annual, total annual quantities, so.
Is there, can we figure a way that we can put in a maximum quantity, I think, given point?
That's a good question. Tim and I actually talked about that, and when we get to the storage of materials, that opportunity is in there. I think we've tried, we put some test language in there, but we're not sure if it's clear enough, so I would look for input, definitely look for input on that, because we went back and forth about how we would do that.
We need to do it, because the point being would.
Yes, exactly.
Something somewhere enforceable.
Right, and we want to make sure, so this, this section enforces the total amount that they can purchase over the year. The, the storage of materials section would be the storage in given time, so.
How is, how are we going to determine this?
Whether or not they meet it, well, that's a good.
How are we going to determine whether or not they haven't gotten more?
Have they given lunch?
Oh, in the year, total, in the year.
In the year.
So that's a good question that we should discuss. I mean, one option, of course, would be, do we require the applicant to submit an annual report of some sort that says, you know, these were the conditions we had to meet during the year, here's how we met those conditions, and it might be more than just these. I'm not sure this is something that we are able to decide tonight. Is it something where, instead of an annual report to the board, we ask them to keep the records, and if anybody requests to see them, like the building inspector because there's been a complaint, then they have to prove at that time, so.
Maintain a log.
Yeah, maintain sort of, some sort of logs that can be inspected. Certainly, when we get to the deliveries portion, that's in the zoning, that they maintain a log. So I guess I'd open that up to the board, is do we want them to maintain logs that can be inspected, or submit reports that we would have to review on whatever basis.
I would assume for their own purposes, they maintain kind of, you know, inventory of what, what came in, the materials.
I'm not, I wouldn't be comfortable at a log level, I think it's more of an annual report. I'm not sure who the report goes to, or if it's something that needs to be submitted, or it's something that's available for review. I'd want it at least certified by an officer of the organization. I don't think it needs to be something that's audited necessarily, but I think certified by someone that's an officer is important.
So then, I think if we're looking at the idea of an annual report, as we go through here, we should identify what items would go on that annual report, and potentially even do some sort of draft of what that report would look like, you know? Do we have a grid that gets filled out, and that, that's what gets handed to the board? If we decide we'd rather do the log, because again, I think we're not going to know that answer until we go through and identify what actually needs to be tracked. If we decide we want a log, then I think we need to identify what columns we'd want in that log, or what categories. So how exact, how exactly do we need them to present the information so that it is reviewed consistent with the permit? Yeah, Alex?
It's got to be verifiable.
Verifiable is a good point, yeah.
Because if it's not verifiable, it isn't worth, it's not worth getting.
So presumably, and for something like this, the invoices over the year would be the verification of what they purchased.
So I, I mean, keeping a log doesn't seem to me to be the end of the world.
But that log would be backed up by the invoices.
Yeah.
And I think the certification is important, and then if we want to have the, you know, I don't know if we want to have a copy of every receipt or not, but certainly it's something that if, if we had not it right, if we needed to have an audit rate, I'm not sure how you would trigger that, but.
Right.
They'd have to keep the records for a certain number of years. That's typically how we handle it with reporting structures, where we have a lease requirement to report.
So you don't actually provide the invoices, so the person that you're reporting to has the right to come back and audit them, and they have to keep them for X number of years.
That's correct.
Okay. I think that makes more sense than giving us invoice after invoice after invoice.
But to your point, I think the, the log, if the log is certified by an officer, I think that would be suitable. I don't, I don't think there's anything wrong with both. I mean, if you have a log, you can periodically say, well, you know, I'm sure some of these materials come in in bulk in March and April and May, and then they don't see any in November, December, so.
Right.
You know, so it's, I think, again, I don't think it'd be anything outstanding either anyways. I mean, to take a list of ten materials and say, I received three hundred cubic yards in such and such a date, mark it a book.
Okay.
Received two hundred.
So date, certainly material, quantity are the types of things that we'd be looking to track. Yes.
Just a, we're all taking those to a certain point, but someone has got to incorporate these, and are we, you and Tim are point people here?
I would say for the moment, Tim and I would be the point people on this, so. Yeah, just to clarify that, it's a good point.
Just so that we, we don't find ourselves, oh, I thought you were.
Everybody comes in with a new draft. Yes, no, I think that makes sense, is that Tim and I will keep, keep control of the draft for the moment, just so that we can report all of these.
Feel free to take your own copious and detailed stuff, just to.
We can like backtrack and play as old as we are, to answer that, okay?
Yeah, exactly.
Three, find it as we.
Right.
One, one thing is that, and I've lost the.
You're jumping, you're going to jump ahead on us?
What page were we just on?
We were just on five.
Five.
You skipped over to five.
Oh, on, on, on page four.
Yes.
One, own, lease, operate and store vehicles and equipment reasonably necessary for business operations. As you recall, the way we're going to be measuring that their business operations do not exceed.
Yes.
The 2012 level is we're going to look at the number of vehicles and make sure the number of vehicles don't exceed the number and type of vehicles.
Exactly.
But that, that is, it, this is, it may be reasonably necessary, but if it exceeds, it can't exceed.
Who's to say not to exceed?
We've got to reference the limit here.
Yeah, it's actually on pages six and seven, but you're absolutely right, the limit needs to be referenced here as well.
Not to exceed.
So, the list themselves is under, we, and Tim and I went back and forth as to where this table actually belonged. Right now, it's under E vehicles, which is still part of this whole section, but it may be that it belongs back under one, under one year.
Could just be referenced, you can just reference the section as well.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Not to exceed twenty-twelve levels as.
Twelve levels as, as stated herein, right?
Well, I mean, we very have to explain how we, we determine those twenty, but we're doing it by the quantities of materials, by the number of employees, and by the number of vehicles.
But yes, and by the list of vehicles, and which one, which they've provided for us in the application, yes.
Exactly, the same type of vehicles.
Yes.
And getting back to conditions of approval, when it says employ, employees, it would be employ, no more than nineteen employees.
No more than nineteen, as shown below, because remember, some of these employees are crossing, uh...
Well, I mean, the.
Crossing the different businesses.
Question is, that we're going to get to, here we've got four, six people who supposedly have nothing to do with landscaping.
Actually, they have been referenced.
So then we take them out, yeah, potentially.
But if those people really have nothing to do with landscaping, I mean, the problem has to be that if they do fill up a landscaping truck with their, with, they're, they're doing landscaping, and I have a feeling that we should not exclude them so that that six can grow to ten, and this is all these old nursery employees.
Right.
Didn't we kind of discuss this early on, where we said, even though we don't have the authority to impose what they're going to do for the nursery business, we really have to list the volumes, what employees, vehicles, materials in here, which encompass the nursery business, because otherwise, it's not, it's just not enforceable.
Yeah, and we did talk about this before, as how.
But we made the landscape employees, so we've got twenty people for, I mean, nursery, well, we've got twenty people for nursery now.
Yeah, and that, that will become more and more difficult as we go through. But certainly, some of the materials are, the same types of materials are used for both businesses, because they're selling mulch as part of the nursery and using mulch as part of the landscaping, so this is where, as we go through, there are certain things that we can regulate that may also be regulating the nursery, as in the quantities of mulch at any given time or total, but the point is, we are focusing on the landscaping. But yes, it's going to be, it's going to be an interesting line to try and.
I mean, if you don't have the total number here, the employees, for instance, what Alex just said.
Absolutely.
I could say, the guy's loading mulch into the back of the truck to take it to Walsley or whatever, I could say, he's a, he's a nursery worker. You guys say, no, he's a landscape worker.
Yep.
Well, he ain't going out in the job, but yeah, but he's loading the truck, it's consistent.
Right.
Let's say no more than nineteen employees.
Yeah. All right. Okay, so back to, as, as we're continuing our idea of whether we do the log or the annual report, three is sell stone, this is on page five, top of page five, sell stone dust, gravel pavers, landscape ornamentations, timbers and related materials to implement a landscape project as defined in section four A. Now, the material that we were given is stone, which is a three-quarter stone, three-quarter inch stone, dense grade, stone dust, 2012 level is 2000. You will note, actually, Tim and I went back on this, back and forth on this, but landscape ornamentation is not defined in the zoning, and so we need to consider how we define that. If you remember, at one point, the applicant had given us some supplementary materials with the definition of landscape ornament, it's either landscape ornamentation or landscape ornaments, it's a very broad definition, and would include a number of things that we may or may not feel is appropriate. So one of the things that we should do between now and next week, or next meeting, not next week, is consider how we as a board want to define landscape ornamentation, and also remember that this is a may. The first part is, a landscaping business is defined as, but this part is under the landscaping business may be authorized to. So the board has some discretion in how it defines these materials under section two. So, keep that in mind as we go forward. Again, under the section, it's receive deliveries of, sell and deliver firewood to customers. Firewood is limited to total cords of a thousand cords. And finally, provide snow plowing and snow and ice removal for third pers, third party, I think is the word we're missing there. Let me just double check.
Says third persons.
Third person, oh, third persons, you're right. Third persons, and including the town of Milton. Yes, Mike?
Going backwards a little bit, the landscape ornamentation.
Yes.
Pink flamingos, I mean.
Well, that becomes a question if it's a landscaping business.
Or is it a nursery business that sells the landscape work?
Well, but, but here's a question, it's a landscaping business that, where they say, you know, we can define the, the landscape ornamentations needed to implement a landscape design, is the, the language in the zoning. Let me just go back to it.
Says landscape ornamentations, timbers and related materials needed to implement a landscape design.
So then the question becomes, what landscape ornamentations are needed to implement a landscape design by a landscaping business? To your point about pink flamingos, anybody can install a pink flamingo, so if we are considering a definition.
Anybody but a nursery employee.
You can install a pink flamingo, Alex, or, you know, Brian, or I could. The point is, you don't need a landscaper to install a pink flamingo. So if we are going to define any of these items under the, the may authorize, I would suggest that we need to consider what ornamentations actually require a landscaping business, the landscaper, somebody who installs pavers and other things to install, and what is more of a retail-type ornament that anybody can install. So, again, that's something, that's something that requires more thought than we can give in one night.
Yeah, I'm, I'm immediately concerned about that.
Yes.
That way of interpreting, because I, I think you could make the argument that anybody could install mulch, or anybody could install.
That's true.
Pavers with an instruction book, so, and I, I know it's a slippery slope, but I think that, that's a, that's a flawed test in my mind.
So I am certainly open to other tests, because I think the concern becomes here, we're not authorized to allow the nursery business, in fact, we should move down to activities not authorized by the special permit, because this runs into it. I think you need to think of, of the businesses that are currently on site, which is the nursery operation and the landscape, well, the landscaping business isn't currently on site, that's the whole point, but those businesses that will be on site, just to remember that the applicant has said that they don't want us to consider sale of Christmas trees and related holiday materials, because they feel that falls under the other businesses that are on there. And in fact, if you look at C, that is specifically listed as an activity that's not authorized by the special permit and site plan approval. Nursery operations, actually, I need to add, which I say are authorized by 1967, it's a special permit, that actually needs to add, the 1987 as well. Construction activities for properties not owned by the applicants, this is something, this is C on page five.
Let's go back to sell stone dust, gravel, pavers. You say stone.
That was from the application.
But we've got stone.
Yep.
Dust, gravel, pavers.
There's no information on that from the application, so.
Well, we still have to address it.
I know we have to address it, so that's me.
All right.
Again, as, as I said, this is where we're pulling the stuff from the application and asking the board to.
But on the side of that, say, more info.
Yep.
And of course, we need an explanation somewhere to say that the reason we've got these two hundred, 2012 quantities is that it establishes a maximum, that has to be, has to be stated somewhere.
It's maybe a stupid question, but three-quarter inch stone, dense graded in stone dust, three distinctly different things.
Yeah, so does the 2,000 apply individually?
So 2,000 each?
Or 2,000 total?
The way I read it.
Oh, we took it directly from the applicant.
I read it as 2,000 total, because it's on the same line. Everything else is broken out separately, so that's the way I would read this.
Okay.
That's the way I would read it.
All right, so that makes sense.
Is that how they measure these things? If you buy pavers, do you buy them by?
I'm sorry, we're talking about the dense grade and stone dust.
Yeah, it's not, it's all loose material.
No, I think, I mean, the fact that, the pavers, I think that falls right into the landscaping definition and, excuse me.
But then we have to determine the quantity.
Landscape ornamentation definition, how do you determine the quantity if there wasn't a 2012 level?
Right.
Can they have samples on site and have the materials delivered directly to the job site?
That's an interesting idea, as a matter of fact. That would certainly cut down on what is stored on site, and the number of deliveries coming to the site.
Because without a 2012 level, I'm not sure how we come up with an arbitrary level.
Right.
Everything else, we're going with a specific baseline here of 2012.
Why can't we come up with a 2012 level?
If they can provide one, then I'm happy to look at it. If they, but we don't have it right now, is I guess what I'm saying.
Yeah. So I think that goes to Alex's more info on that.
Okay, quick point.
To job. But I think the samples on site and deliveries directly to job is an interesting thing to consider, as we look at some of the other things. So, so the reason I was talking about activities not authorized by the special permit under C is to draw your attention to two other things. One is that longer part that starts, construction activities for property not owned by the applicants. I believe, Tim, am I correct, that came from the building commissioner's letter? I think that's where that got pulled. And then the second one is sale of any item not specifically authorized in section four A or B. So, again, we're limiting them to the 2012 activities and the 2012 levels, which means, here we are in A and B, saying, here are the 2012 levels, and under C, we're saying, if it's not up there, you can't do it, because it's not the 2012 level.
Right.
So that's what that line is for.
So these four bullet points.
Yes.
Are saying.
You can't do it.
We, we can't authorize it under.
We are not authorizing it under this, or.
Is allowed under the nursery?
No. So the first bullet is saying, we are not authorizing nursery operations because the Board of Appeals has authorized those, so the, the planning board is not authorizing those.
So it's like, we don't authorize the nursery, but it is not authorized.
Yes, it is, yeah, it's authorized by somebody else.
Yeah, obviously, I was interpreting all the bullets as that way. It's not authorized this, but it is.
No, no, don't interpret all the bullets that way, and actually, that's a good point, maybe we should split the bullets up.
Or at least put.
So sale of Christmas trees and related holiday materials is also authorized by something else, not us. And then the two middle ones, as far as I know, are not authorized by anybody. So yes, I think, I think your confusion is a good one, and these need to be split.
Nursery operations, I think if you just put in, at the end of the sentence, in parentheses, you know, authorized by, and then a parenthesis, the.
Is that an endorsement, though? I mean.
No, we're just, we're right, we are specifically.
I understand what we're saying, we're saying it's not allowed.
No, 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 we're not saying it's not allowed.
Under this permit.
Yeah.
We're saying it's not allowed under this permit, that's what we're saying.
No, 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 that's not what we're saying. We're saying it's not. We're saying it's not authorized by this permit.
Fine, that's fine.
But it still may be allowed on the site, is what I'm saying.
That's fine, but I don't think, I don't, I don't feel comfortable saying what allows that. I'd rather just say this permit doesn't authorize it.
Nursery operations, period.
It's their problem to figure out how it is authorized.
So, then take out which are the authorized by the 1967.
But they have to be nursery operations, which are separate and distinct from landscaping operations.
That's fair.
Yep.
That really doesn't change what you said, Wallace.
No, I think, but it clarifies it to your earlier point, Mike, about trying to distinguish from nursery and landscape. That says nursery operations, which aren't also contiguous with the landscape, like, for example, the storage of mulch, are not authorized by this. So, storage of mulch, yes, and that goes to both landscaping and nursery.
Yeah.
But other things, yeah, I think that's a good point, Alex. All right.
And of course, the storage of mulch is perfect, because if you're running a nursery, you wouldn't store as much mulch.
Right, exactly. So, it's the additional.
Which falls it all into one piece.
Right, so.
I'm looking for, you know, I'm looking for in the 67 permit for the sale of Christmas trees, because it seems to me that.
They didn't ask, they told us they don't want it in here.
They told us that they did not want it in here, yeah, exactly.
I understand that. I, if, I'm just interested to.
Well, you know, it's a fortune.
I mean, it does seem to me that if they're wrong, I'm gonna, if, well, if they're wrong.
Where are you gonna get your tree at?
And can't do any Christmas sales, that's sort of, that's sort of it for their nursery.
If they're wrong and they can't do Christmas sales, they can always come back under the zoning and ask us for, to modify the small, yes, exactly.
A hearing, a special permit to sell Christmas trees.
Emily, we didn't, you didn't address quantity on snow plowing?
Yes.
And it was, it was a question we had in the application anyway.
Yes.
It was a little unclear.
How we do that, so.
Well, what they were showing us. They basically had, they gave us invoices for snow plowing for two, that they were subcontractors, I believe, on, for two different companies, but I don't know if there was a.
I assumed that was just proving that they had done snow plowing at the time, but you're right, I don't think, I don't believe it addresses quantities, so that's a.
Once can probably be employees and equipment.
Employees and equipment, yeah.
Okay, well, that would be a good way to do it.
Okay.
I mean, isn't it, isn't it already quantified relative to employees and equipment?
No, we don't have snow plowing employees identified. So, equipment, yes.
So, the snow plowing employees don't fall under landscape employees?
Well, they weren't, they weren't pulled out of, you know, it was either landscaping or nursery, there was not a subdefinition of.
So, we have, what we were, sorry.
Oh, I see what you mean, you're just saying, keep them.
I just assume in April, I had seven landscape employees, well, I maintained two of them through the winter, or three of them through the winter for snow plowing, so if you come down there, I still have four nursery people and, or, you know, I still have less than 19 people.
So, it has to be with the existing vehicles and the existing nine people, I guess, yeah, that's a great way, that might be a good way to interpret it. What we were given was two invoices, one for Chris and Brick and Stone, and one for Johnny Driscoll Landscaping, and it just has a redacted number for the total paid.
But they're limited.
So, there's no, there's absolutely no way to determine volume, so I actually think Mike's probably on to something there.
I think that's a good point, so.
We based it on the existing vehicles and.
There was a discussion about, you know, there's a difference between winter 2015 and snow plowing, and if it doesn't.
Right, that's a good point.
That's an excellent point, you can't do it on snow, on volume or dollars.
Based it on the existing vehicles and existing employees.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense, great idea.
What was the idea? There was no idea.
We're going to, we're going to base snow plowing and snow and ice removal based on the number of existing employees and equipment, rather than trying to assign a volume amount to winters that change.
Okay.
Regularly. At least, I certainly hope it changes this year from past year, and in a downward fashion, so.
Thank you for clarifying.
Not that I want to hit anybody's snowplow operations, but.
I do.
If you ask me, have you ever seen this much snow before, and I have to say, no.
No, definitely not. So, that, for the moment, takes us down to allowed hours of operation.
Well, it gets us actually to construction activities.
Okay, so, construction activities from.
I mean, if they're, you know, building stuff for the landscaping business, it certainly is controlled by.
Yeah, it's contained.
No, this came from the building inspector, Hank, our commissioner, let me find it. I just want to let you know where it came from.
The building inspector is not always.
Isn't, isn't the building inspector saying, under the land, under the.
It's not.
This is not allowed?
No, he had wanted us, I've got it here, let me find, let me hunt it down for a second, so, and C, so he had had specific recommended conditions in here, and I am, okay, so this was C, I know you guys don't have this, it says February 26 memo, or you might not all have it, it's under C, and it says, in section two, definition of landscaping business permissible activities, the terms patios, related grounds, and other outdoor areas which are owned by others, is vague and needs specificity, so as to prevent the landscape business from morphing into a construction business. They should not be allowed to build house foundations, accessory buildings such as garden sheds or cabanas, retaining walls over four feet in height, pools or pool aprons, or paved driveways with asphalt, or any masonry product. He's got some additional information on that. So, the reason it says construction activities for property not owned by the applicants is so that they can continue to maintain their own driveway and their own walls and build as needed, especially as some of the later mitigation items require them to build walls. But it puts this in, now, I am putting this in because the building commissioner requested it, and we wanted to make sure.
I get it, I get it, but it does seem to me that if you, if you go up, you have to, you know, you have to mention in, up above, that they can construct buildings for their landscaping business with.
Oh, I see what you mean, so you would put it under, where to go?
Maybe after.
Under A, maybe you create an A, oh, sorry, actually, B, I think it should probably be under B.
Why, why do you need to?
Four to five.
Why do you need to? Because this, this says, these restrictions only for, like you pointed out a second ago, if the land's not owned by.
Right.
So, if they own the land.
What if they own the land, they can't, they can, they still can build on it.
Sure, they can, they get a permit and they.
With approval.
So, you want to specifically authorize them to be able to build on their own land?
I can do that, right? Anybody can do that.
Does that sound?
Sorry, what was the?
So, out, so because there's basically under C, there's the negative, you know, you can't build on land that you don't own.
Hmm, I see.
It implies the positive, that they can build on land that they do own.
They still.
So, Alex is suggesting that we specifically authorize them to be able to build on land that they do own in a, in a section further up.
I'm just asking, take it for what it's worth, is that necessary? I mean, you don't, you don't gotta tell me that I can build something on my land if I go get a permit, you don't need to tell me that.
If they want to expand their wood barn, they say we're doing so well.
They gotta go get a permit and do it.
Well, okay.
If they don't get the permit, then they can't do it.
Well, I understand, but it isn't just a building permit, it is, it's part of the special permit.
Why? They can expand the wood barn, but they can't put any more wood in it.
We don't give any special rights that we don't stay.
By the 2012 level, right?
Well, I made to, I think they got a permit from the Board of Appeals for their wood barn.
Yes.
If we don't stay something in here, why would.
If we are taking over for the Board of Appeals, we should have the same, I mean, we can, we can let the Board of Appeals authorize all buildings, but I mean, we're in charge of the landscaping business.
I'm not sure we want to authorize, specifically authorize them to build anything additional, because they're supposed to be keeping to the 2012 levels, but we might consider authorizing maintenance of the existing buildings. I think just as a clarification, I know it's implied, but.
Let me think about, it does seem to me that there is something to be said about their building, new buildings, which needs a permit.
Okay, let's think about that one.
I think most of the items that are listed here, this is a question for the building inspector, I think, but the items you're listing here, I think, maybe the exception of a driveway.
Mm-hmm.
Need a building permit.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know if, I don't know what landscape, I don't know if a paver, I don't think pavers require a building permit, so I'm wondering if that can be a distincting, distinctive point.
That's a really good point, so we don't have to have all this additional language, you just say that they are not authorized to build anything that requires a building permit, we should double check that the land.
Maybe you add driveways to that or something.
Yeah, exactly.
Because I don't want to, I don't want to leave out anything.
Mm-hmm.
They're just, I circle pergola and fences, like, you know, maybe.
The fence requires a building permit, and I think it's not, what's that?
Over six feet.
Over six feet requires a building permit, okay.
I mean, you can put some little dinky fences in, some bullshit, sometimes it's powerful landscape, I don't know.
Little picket.
Actually, it's over 18, that's big as a windmill.
Eight feet, Jesus, okay.
All right.
Same thing with pergola. You don't need, you don't need a building permit to put in, put in pavers in your driveway.
No, I don't think so. All right, so then, let's, let's keep considering this particular section, because it will be obviously important as we go further, and as you can see, it's not that easy to write.
I think only second bullet is the one we need.
Yeah, exactly, I think the others are fine for the moment. So, D, allowed hours of operation, now, if you remember, this was a question, and we've called it out here, is the application was for a different start time than the zoning, the zoning gives us the authorization if we wish to allow, for good reason, an earlier start time. So, the proposed is the sales office to be open from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 6:00 on Saturday, and Sunday, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Loading and use of noisy equipment for the landscaping business only, and you'll see that this table goes over to the next page, page six. The zoning allows 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Monday through Friday, and the applicant has requested 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Saturday, zoning is nine to five, request is eight to five, and Sunday, it's not allowed at all under the zoning. And then, on the nursery sales, eight to six, nine to six, 10 to three, and the zoning specifically allows 10 to three. Deliveries, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM on weekdays, and then, not allowed Saturdays and Sundays, emptying the dumpster, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM weekdays, and not allowed Saturday and Sunday. And then, you'll see, there's some operational things where we pulled down, because they were time-specific, hours of operation-specific, so no equipment or vehicle with a gas or diesel engine, other than a car or other personal vehicle, may be operated on the site before 8:00 AM, Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM on Saturday, or 10:00 AM on Sunday. And then, the same type of vehicle, gas or diesel, other than car or personal, may be operated on the site after 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, or 3:00 PM on Sunday. And that is, again, just to clarify those operating conditions that match up with the hours of operation.
The hours are, the hours would move if we moved these hours, those would move, so those aren't, those aren't callouts, those are just explaining what.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Okay.
So, I guess the question for the board here is really, and again, I don't know that we'll be able to answer it tonight, do we want to allow those earlier start times for the loading? It's really just the loading and use of noisy equipment for the landscaping business for the 7:00 AM start Monday through Friday, and the 8:00 AM start Saturday, that's the only difference between the request and the zoning.
My only other question would be, why are we referencing nursery sales?
Because we're not referencing, referencing nursery sales, it's a sales office for landscaping, selling the landscaping services.
No, no.
Where?
Loading and use of noisy equipment.
Oh, for nursery sales only, oh, that one, I'm sorry, because this, in the zoning, it specifically states that they can load for the nursery from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM on Sundays, so that's directed from the zoning, and that's why we're referencing it, this because it's in the zoning itself.
Okay, got it.
I think we should keep thinking about this.
Okay.
Do we have any, I mean, is there any point of discussion, though, so we have something to think about? I mean, I'm just interested in your feedback, if you have any points, because I, I'd just like something to think about.
This, does, I know we've already went through this, and I know we have the information, does Colto stop at seven, Monday through Friday, and eight on Saturday?
You had that spreadsheet.
I know, yeah.
I don't have it on me, but we have the information, I can.
Okay, bring that for the next meeting.
We've got all the, all the nurseries?
Not all of them, but a few.
Certainly, it would be nice to have the culture, because then we can see if it's consistent with our previous.
And it would be good to know as much about the others as we can.
Yeah.
Because we have a fairness argument that's been made.
Right.
I agree with that.
And obviously, we want to do that. Let me just see if I see that, okay, I don't see the other language I wanted to reference immediately, so let's keep on our list. So, E is the list of vehicles from 2012. We have the, well, one question for the board, so the applicant gave us the year of the vehicle, the estimated replacement date, the vehicle description, the vehicle use, whether it's nursery, landscaping, or both, and then, what the vehicle actually does. Tim had a good point, which is whether or not the estimated replacement date should be in the special permit, because it only, it is only an estimate. I think they were giving us an idea that it would be swapped out, so that's one thing to consider. And then, also under E, so the first part of E is the list of the allowed vehicles, and then, the second part of E is the condition of operation of those vehicles. So, that's when we talk about that they have to be turned off by 6:00 PM on weekdays, what, that they have to be shut off immediately if they return after that, wind loading cannot happen, bought backup alarms on equipment, equipment being turned off with non-use, you can see the rest of it, employees wearing earphones while listening to radio, CD players and the like, the idea is that they're most likely to be operating equipment at that point. Where they will be parked, that they'll be properly registered, all of these are items that came from the application or from the zoning. So, and then, for all of these, where there's a geographic item, so for example, the equipment will be parked in such and such a place, that type of equipment will be parked in that type of place, remembering that this has to refer back to the plans that are, yeah, exactly, that will be. So, so have a look through that, see if we've missed anything, or if we inadvertently put something there that you feel belongs in a different section.
Getting back to the Bobcats?
Yes.
They've got one, two, three, four, five, six, or four Bobcats, two Gators, and a golf cart.
Yes.
Supposedly exclusively and used for nursery business, and not used in loading trucks for landscaping materials.
Bobcats three and four are landscaping.
I see that, but.
But the other two, yes.
If they use these Bobcats listed for the nursery, for landscaping business, that's would be a breach of the permit.
Okay.
And it, it seems to me that it's unlikely that they wouldn't use these Bobcats, that they'd say, oh, we're loading a landscaping truck, grab a Bobcat, oh, grab Bobcat number three.
Right.
I, you know, having these Bobcats racing around everywhere, and saying, well, it's all nursery business, it's, 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 it's a little troubling, and I don't think that they can probably separate the use of Bobcats, and we're going to be making provisions for no idling of Bobcats. I mean, there's already provision in the, in the special permit, which we should.
Reference the special permit, yeah.
Use the same, use the same thing, and, and, you know, talk about trying to avoid a lot of backing movements by Bobcats, because that's particularly annoying. a lot of backing movements by Bobcats, because that's particularly annoying.
Right.
I hear exactly what you're saying. I mean, I actually worked at a nursery, and it wasn't uncommon at all for people to say, go get truck three, or go get tractor one, or whatever. So, I mean, I think if they, I don't have a problem with requiring them to use certain numbers. They certainly have to be numbered, probably engraved, not with stickers or something, but definitely numbered. And then, you know, I think encouraging them to have nursery, nursery, landscaping, landscaping, that's, that, that certainly motivates them to keep these, this equipment maintained, because if Bobcat three goes down, they, they can't use Bobcat one, the way it's written here.
But they will.
Yeah, I was going to say that.
Then they're in violation, so it's, I understand.
But they'll cover the number with their.
Mud, with some mulch.
Exactly.
I, I mean, I think to Alex's point, that.
I'm just a ball of your ideas.
I think to Alex's point, whatever conditions we set up for all of the equipment has to apply equally to all the equipment, because it is impossible to tell. If you are standing.
I agree with that.
On the street, or on the property line, or whatever, you're never going to know if it's Bobcat one.
I'm fine with, yes.
You're fine with the list, is what you're saying.
I'm fine with the list, and I'm fine with the regulations applying equally to the list.
To everything, yeah.
But I just, I don't think we should necessarily say, you know, look, we're going to make, we're going to let all of the Bobcats do anything. I actually think it's better to have it.
So three and four is landscaping only, and if you don't maintain three and four, you're kind of stuck. It's essentially what you're saying, which is.
Essentially what I'm saying. I think the neighbors would like if they sent all the Bobcats out and landscaped.
The problem is not that they're leaving, I think they're loading in the morning.
Exactly. I think they're doing a lot of loading. Okay.
But I think that we could probably work out a condition saying that you can have Bobcats for nursery business only if, and then have a little description of what those Bobcats, the requirement that those particular Bobcats should meet. And, 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 you know, not, not lock us into this particular situation.
Certainly, I mean, one, one glaring condition that they have to meet is that Bobcats one and two are the only ones that are allowed to be operating on a Sunday, because only nursery equipment can load on a Sunday.
You could say that if only two Bobcats are allowed to operate simultaneously.
One for nursery, one, oh, that's a good, other good point.
But that'd be hard to enforce, though. That'd be, is hard to enforce with everything else you said.
Yeah, but still, the number of Bobcats operating at once is.
That's, that's, I think that's an interesting thing to consider.
But I think more that, there has to be more than one permitted, because.
Can we, can we regulate that? Are we allowed to regulate that?
We can propose the conditions. I would expect at some point, as we come closer to having a final set of conditions, we would, of course, share that with the applicant and allow the applicant.
It's not the applicant, well, yeah, I mean, my concern is, we say you can only run two at a time, but.
That's regulating it.
Can we regulate nursery?
No, you're right.
Yeah, oh, I see what you mean. Yes, that's a good question.
I think you're right. I think you're right.
Yeah.
We're not in the realm of regulating the nursery.
Right.
But you could, you, you can have operational guidelines, which would not be operational requirements, but the operational guidelines would be a way of making the, making the premises a quieter place. And if the guidelines weren't complied with, it wouldn't be necessarily a violation, but it would be, it would be a factor when renewal came up.
I agree with that. I think the guidelines, I have no issue with.
I think that's an interesting idea.
The idea of having only two running on site at any one time. I just don't know if you can enforce that, because they can say it's nursery business.
I said it, and I agree with you.
So then I think.
I agree with the guidelines, 100%.
I think that I, that the idea of guidelines brings up a really good point, is that we can have a set of, you must meet these requirements, and then we can have a sort of set of best management practices guidelines in there, saying beyond the requirements, we would, we strongly recommend that you follow these guidelines. And as Alex says, use that as a way of doing the review. Because, of course, at some point, we discuss, not just the operating, or the, the operations here, these conditions that we're putting on it, but at some point, we need to discuss other things, such as the length of the permit. And that goes into our, the length of the permit, and how we're going to review the permit at the end of that period. So that idea of additional guidelines is a good idea, yeah. So then the next thing after the trucks and the operation, or the vehicles rather than the operation, is the storage of materials. So this really is storage conditions, and this is where your point, Mike, comes in, is the bins have a capacity of 100, each of the bins has a capacity of 160 yards.
Can I, can I actually ask something real quick?
Yeah, of course.
It was a question I had about, some of the, some of the vehicles have kind of like make a model.
Yes.
They probably wouldn't stop making the Silverado, but is that something that, do, I mean, do, is that like level especially, like, if there's a better, quieter, more efficient pickup truck that they want to replace it with?
Do we require them to replace it with a Silverado, you mean? Yes. I think that goes to your estimated replacement date question, too, Tim, is what specificity do we need in the special permit? Do we actually need the estimated replacement date? And that's a good point. Do we need that specific vehicle description, or can we just say pickup, dump truck?
I don't think you can say just pickup, but I think you could certainly say or similar.
Or similar is a good point, yeah.
Pickup is too vague.
Yeah.
So is dump truck.
But you, we're good, we're going to want them to use nice equipment. In other words, if you, if they can get a, a nice quiet truck or a noisy truck, we want them to get the nice quiet truck.
Fair enough. Okay.
Yeah, I think, you know, the age of the internet, you can look up the specifications for any past vehicle at this point.
Right.
So you should be able to, in 2020, figure out if they bought the, something that's similar, if they're way off the specifications.
Okay.
I think it's a great catch by Tim, I just think we need to be careful not to get too vague here.
Right. Yes, enforceability is going to be key. So, again, the under storage conditions, and we're on page eight, towards the bottom now. The number of bins was specified on the plans. We may want to actually add that to the text as well. They, each bin has a capacity of 160 cubic yards. They are noted that they'll fill each bin at the start of the season and reorder when volumes drop to 40 cubic yards. To your point, Mike, and this is where Tim and I were going back and forth as to how we restrict the amount that's on site at any one time. Our solution to start with was at no time shall the materials be stored in the bins at more than the capacity. So in other words, you can't overflow the bins. We thought that was the simplest way of doing it, but.
It would be 160 cubic yards.
Maximum would be 160 cubic yards per bin. So, so you could have fully bins of mulch. Obviously, that means that you aren't going to have a bin of something else, potentially. But you can't have your bins overflow, was the idea.
So there's nine material bins, so you're talking about 1,620 cubic yards at any time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, but I, I am open to other suggestions of how to deal with that, so, and then.
I think what Brian just calculated in his head, he has to be pretty. Just some note about 100, no, not to exceed 160 cubic yards per bin, or 16, what was the number again?
1620.
Or 1620 total.
Okay.
Yeah, and that, I was just trying to find the totals here, but let's see.
As related to the number of bins shown on drawing, such and such.
Well.
Alex, yes.
You know, we don't want nine bins of mulch.
No, we don't, but they, I doubt that they do that anyway, because they have to have the other materials on site.
They use up all their quantity and.
Otherwise, otherwise, they wouldn't be able to sell anything else.
And they're saying 12, they're basically limited to 12,000 cubic yards of materials if you, if you, if you just, I'm not counting firewood in that. So it's 12,000.
That's fine, because firewood's in the wood barn anyway.
Right, so it's 12,000 cubic yards, so you're talking about, you know, less than 10%. No, I'm sorry, a little bit more than 10%, sorry, at any given time that can be on site. That's, I was actually thinking more like a third, so I think 10% at any given time is pretty.
Reasonable.
Reasonable, it actually makes me wonder if there's going to be more deliveries than necessary, but.
That's actually, I'm going to sit there and, not right at this moment, but that would be an interesting thing to do, is if there's a total amount.
Twelve, then it's about.
I think, actually, they gave us in the application, the number of deliveries per year. We should consider whether or not we want to put that into the special permit. Did we, we didn't do that under deliveries, did we, Tim? No, we didn't.
Well, isn't that, doesn't that kind of collide with the volumes?
Well, they had given us a maximum, or an expected number of deliveries per year.
Yeah, and that was expected, and the volumes are the volumes. If it takes 10 trucks or 11 trucks, the volume's the volume.
Except it's still, it's the deliveries that the abutters and neighborhood have objected to as the trucks coming on, so obviously, we want fewer deliveries if possible, so.
But I mean, no, you know, the defender that's selling it to them as well as them are not going to want to bring a quad loaded truck or something.
Right, that's also true, yeah.
We can discuss when we get to deliveries, but maybe we need to have the deliveries be, you know, no, no less than a certain amount of bins or something.
Well, what does, how much, how much does 160 cubic yards, does that fill an 18-wheeler?
I think an 18-wheeler does about, depending on the material, like 22 to 27 cubic yards. A trailer dump?
22 to 20, 160, 160, 160 cubic yards is how many 18-wheelers?
I believe a trailer dump, maybe these guys know, 22 yards?
Whoa, 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 Mike, questions this way. The idea is that we identify questions here and then send them over. So you're asking.
But that's a.
How many did you say, Josh?
It's 55.
And as of the time of year with the weight, 20 years less, August is more, somewhere between 55 and 70.
Okay, thank you.
So that could be three 18-wheelers, which is a fair amount of material.
Which is consistent with the application, when, that they say that they'll be filled up in the spring, and the application said we had, they would have more deliveries in the spring, so.
You're saying this, the storage of materials, and we've got the amounts. It doesn't say what the materials are going to be, or how.
Well, the materials are at the beginning, yes.
It comes later.
Well, the materials are identified at the beginning.
They smell free, they.
That, if you turn the, wait, where did we put the dust-free, smell-free? I thought we'd actually moved it there.
Because it is talking about storage conditions, which it would seem to me that would, that would be.
No, they, they should be there, you're right, that's missing, thank you. I thought we'd moved those back there. Dust-free, where did we put that? Deliveries.
Dust-free, smell-free.
Smell-free, yeah. I mean, under the storage, lighting, dumpsters, landscaping, and fencing, drainage. Yeah, I think that got deleted in the back and forth, because I remember having a, a number for it. So let me pull, dust-free, smell-free. Let me pull the language on that.
You might say, what are the materials that can go into these bins?
Mm-hmm, which materials and bins, yep. Oh, I know, the, also, don't forget the next bullet point, where 527 CMR-1, chapter 31, governs mulches, so we just note that. But you're right, Alex, we need to have the others.
We looked at that and seen what it says, because we should.
Absolutely.
Just to make sure that they're.
That we agree with it.
On the ball up at the state level.
This is where it is. If you go over to the top of page nine, the land care yard and the materials in the bin shall be watered regularly by the five permanently mounted sprinklers in the area, or by hand or tank irrigation is needed to prevent dust and odors. We need to decide if that is enough, or we need additional information. And then the fertilizers, insect weed and fungus controls. Inside the wood barn, at least 35 feet from the lot line. Materials will be kept in appropriate storage bins, and any spillage should be cleaned immediately. I think there may also be a state reg on storage of those types of materials, and we may consider if we want to reference that, the way we did with mulch.
Now, one thing about mulch is that wetting it down is not necessarily the best idea in the world.
Yes, yeah.
So, so let's not require that.
Okay, good point.
I think the application had language about 15 minutes of watering three times a week, or something like that.
So let's hunt that down.
That's in there.
Yeah. Yep, and as we note which bins, which bins contain which materials, we should note that the mulch bin should not be watered.
Right.
At least not as regularly.
Well, yeah, I want to be careful. We're requiring them to water as necessary.
Yes.
Does that, that may cover the idea that you don't have to water the mulch, because it's not a source of, it's not the same source of dust as some other material might be.
But we may want to be, we may want to consider being specific about that as well. Because, again, part of what these conditions do is they set up the expectations for all of us, applicant, board, people reviewing the.
Can we go back and put in what the fire department has already.
Yes, of course. I'd forgotten about the fire department letter, yep.
They already have this for Eagle Farm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, you want to provide it to us?
That we haven't already looked at.
Perfect. The fire department has something specific, I am happy to include it.
We've already addressed this issue.
Okay.
From a dust and odor, or just from a fire prevention? Because mulch does like to self-combust.
We like fire prevention.
It's a fire, that's what I figured.
527 CMR, chapter 31, fire.
Okay.
That's fire, okay. All right, anything else under this section? If not, the next section is deliveries. And it says, all deliveries shall follow the procedures and mitigation process noted below. So again, this is set in, this is actually set into three sections. Delivery operations, that covers when incoming deliveries are coming in and going out. References, the operations plan, and the direction of travel for all trucks. References, loading and unloading of firewood in the wood barn, and loading, unloading of nursery stock in the land care yard. Two is off-site mitigation, that covers the roadway signs and where there'll be the delivery directions. Three is damage repair, so it covers the hard pack in the town's right-of-way, along Forest Street and Hillside Street, and requires that subsequent damage, once the hard pack is installed, will be monitored and restored. They didn't, we didn't have a time period, so Tim and I put in restored within two weeks. But we may consider whether or not that's reasonable to do. So have a look at this and see if we're missing anything, or need more specificity. And we are coming up, by the way, just to 10 past nine, as we finish this. So as you're looking that, I'll note that parking, lighting, dumpsters, landscaping, and fencing, and drainage remain. Yeah, so I don't know if you want to hit those tonight, so we can make sure we're thinking about them between now and then, or if you want to go home and absorb, well, not go home, because we've got zoning after this, but if you want to absorb this and come back on the eighth.
I think we should consider, once again, some guidelines about when they make their wood deliveries, if they can do it in the middle of the day during the week.
Yeah.
Rather than on weekends. And I understand that some people aren't around then, and want their firewood delivered on weekends. But as much as possible, when they truck out the stuff.
It's tracking, I'm not tracking you, you're tracking me.
Try and, try and make it a good day.
Yeah. Well, that actually brings up an interesting question, Alex, because according to the zoning, deliveries are not allowed Saturday and Sunday. So do we distinguish between.
Taking them out?
I know, do we distinguish between deliveries to the nursery and deliveries from the nursery? Or do we say all deliveries? I think we need to consider that.
Something to think about.
Yeah, exactly. So parking just references the parking plan and states that they're going to provide 34 numbered parking spaces, and how those are going to be divided. Lighting references the proposed conditions plan, requires that all lighting is downward-directed to prevent glare onto adjoining properties. And then, we had been talking, when we were talking about the lighting zoning, we've been talking about the 90-degree cutoff, so I threw it in here for your consideration. Again, that prevents the uplight going into the sky, and potentially also creating glare for neighbors' properties. So have a thought about that. It also requires that floodlights are turned off at the close of business operations each night. We may want to then refer back to the hours of operation, so that's clear. Dumpster screened by fences and plantings, changed regularly, or emptied probably regularly to prevent odors. And then, again, specifies only between 2:00 and 6:00. And that no dumping, dumping into dumpsters should occur after 6:00 o'clock, so to prevent that noise. I think landscaping and fencing and drainage are going to be substantially longer conversations, so I'm just going to call your attention to what's been put there. Obviously, the drainage refers to the drainage plan, and notes that we don't have the sheet number. And then, at one point, there had provided a stormwater operations and maintenance plan, which I've put under drainage, have a review of those. There's not that much else under drainage, because at the time, Tim and I were working on this, it was still under discussion. So I think going through our notes from the last couple of meetings and putting it in would make sense. So that's where we are at the moment. So that's where we are at the moment.
Can I go up on just a couple of this?
Yeah, absolutely.
So dumpsters.
Yes.
We should consider, so just some, again, some sort of best practices. I think it's, I think it's relevant that the lids be remaining down on those. And that that should be required. On the floodlights, I get the ninety-degree cutoff. Is there a, should we further consider cutoffs to try to constrain the light to the property, the, not the spillover, but the, the light out looking into people's second-floor windows?
Yeah.
I think those are my two comments.
Okay, I think that makes sense. All right.
I've got a number of comments on these things, shall we?
Fireway?
I don't, I don't think there should be hard pack on the west side of Forest Street. All that does is increase the width of the street.
Okay.
You know, the neighbors don't want it. They want the street to be kept the way it is, and that's reasonable.
Okay. So then, we need to think about how, how the town's right-of-way is not damaged by the trucks and how we require repairs. If it's not hard pack, it'd be required to.
I mean, there is hard packed its side of the, its side of the, of Forest Street.
Okay.
On the town's right-of-way. It doesn't seem to me they have to hard pack the entire street.
Okay.
Within the town's right-of-way. On parking, we, as you may recall, the special permit says no parking on Forest Street or Hillside Street. And they say, well, there may be occasions during the year that they want to park. And whether or not these would be landscaping activities that they would be dealing in. But it does seem to me that if parking for some of these events, however they may be deemed, is to be allowed, they're probably going to have to hire a police officer to make sure that the streets don't get gummed up like it has happened in the past.
I think that, that in your guidelines section that you suggested would make a lot of sense.
Yeah, I mean, I can't think of a landscaping event that would draw. I mean, if we're not including Christmas trees, I can't really think of one, but I agree.
They're talking about Christmas parties.
I understand, but that's, they're not going to qualify that as a landscaping event.
It's not a nursery operation either.
So, that's, but that's, I'm certainly not regulating it under here. I don't think we should allow street parking or even reference it here, because I can't think of a landscaping event that's going to. I hear what you're saying, and I agree with you.
All right, no, I, I.
I agree with you, I just.
I, I think that maybe they have to go back to the Board of Appeals to, to deal with that. I think that, I think that's right. There is, it can't be a landscaping event that's going to.
They're not selling Christmas trees, I can't think of one.
Right. Anything else for tonight? Alex, you had some more comments?
Well, I, I just wonder about the strength of the floodlights. And you, in your, in your light suggestions, had a certain intensity. And we know what the intensity is, and is it, is it too much? Because those are big lights, they've got.
Those are big lights, yeah.
And it may be that replacer, they have to tone down.
Right.
I mean, direct them downward now, and then when they burn out, uh, do something a little, a little lesser.
Corrected.
Okay. Yeah, and I'll look up the intensity stuff I have in my lighting materials and see what I can find.
And the, I'll, I'll read this to make sure that we've got.
Yeah.
The right sort of.
And then on deliver, the only other thing I add, and we've sort of referenced it, but, you know, we talked about number of deliveries. We should look at whether or not they gave us a baseline for that, I don't remember.
Yeah, I think they did, but that's a good point.
And if they didn't, is there, you know, do we, is there any other guideline we want to put in place?
I'm pretty sure they gave.
I'm not sure there is, but I, I just put it out there.
Okay. All right, so as you, as you guys go through, continuing to look at this between now and the next meeting, again, this idea of how we enforce it, keeping in mind the questions that we've raised.
Understanding we have more.
Yeah.
I mean, is there anything that, as a member of the board, anybody wants to just throw out there on the remaining issues without having a huge discussion for us to give it, give thoughts on, you know, especially.
I'm open to that, you know, yep.
Does anybody have any thoughts right now that they want to put out there? Because, again, I'd love to have, is there something you want one of us to go look at or think about? It would be great to have that opportunity.
You know, I put in what we, what the last written information we had. I think Tim also checked it and pulled everything that he had, or checked to make sure that I've gotten it. I think it's consistent with what we were, I believe, it's worth all of you checking, that it's consistent with what we saw on the sidewalk. And, you know, then again, whether or not this is what the board wants to recommend is another matter. But I'm pretty sure this is consistent with what was on the sidewalk, but please check it. The drainage, as I said, is not as up to date, because we've gotten new material in the past week, and this is the same, in the past two weeks. And this is the same thing that you received two weeks ago. So, that's all I have on it, is just look at what's there, make sure it's consistent with your understanding, and then we can discuss whether or not we think it's appropriate. But I thought we could at least start from a baseline of, yes, this is what we've understood to be proposed, and then decide whether or not we think it's appropriate.
I guess I'd ask if people, if my fellow members here think about, you know, we've heard, we've seen what Centec said, we've seen what the manufacturer of the sound attenuating material said, and then we hear, we've heard what the neighbor said, and they're not all consistent. So.
Right.
It would be great if we especially can focus on what the experts are recommending, and then take into heart, take into mind what the residents are looking for, and see where, if there's a, if there's a compromise provision, or if we think one should overrule the other.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. For all the detailed information that we've received before the next meeting, it would be wise idea to go back through and.
Wait, I wonder from the discussion earlier, if the ambient sound, the background of ambient, same thing? Was the ambient sound of the neighborhood without nursery business?
You know, I thought that was a really interesting point that Ned Corcoran brought up, is, is the ambient sound, because of course, the, the neighbors have said the ambient sound is the sound of the neighborhood. But what we're looking at, and I think Alex referenced the idea earlier on something else, is there is an existing nursery business. We're allowing the landscaping business, if this goes through, then the landscaping business comes on top of that. So that's, what you brought up is a good point. Is it the ambient noise, the noise of the neighborhood? Or is it, so I think what Ned said earlier, is it the noise of the existing nursery business? So, because that makes, yeah, in the neighborhood, because that does make a difference.
The distinction is that that is the neighborhood today.
That is the ambient sound.
In nineteen-sixty-seven, I think that would, you would have to accept the fact that, okay, what are the hours of operation? Obviously, that may dictate the ambient noise.
Right.
But, yeah, it's a real interesting point.
It is an interesting point. And to an earlier conversation, I think that we'd had some months ago, is what we were trying to determine at one point in the mitigation of the impacts, is, we're trying to mitigate the additional impact of the landscaping. If by doing that, we are also mitigating some of the existing nursery, that's fantastic, you know? I mean, if you're mitigating the noise of the bobcat, it doesn't matter whether it's a nursery noise or a landscaping noise, you're mitigating that bobcat. But the real key for us in granting a special permit for a landscaping business is ensuring that we're mitigating that additional impact of the landscaping. So that's a good point, Mike.
It seems most of the comments on the noise were relative to the bobcats and their sound level and the consistency around the bobcats.
Right.
In which case, in fact, they're probably, for the most part, the nursery. But I, I think what you just said was a good point. And that is, if we're indirectly mitigating the sound of the nursery and doing this, then.
Right.
Isn't that.
That's to the benefit of everybody, yeah, exactly. So, yes, Alex.
I have to say that if we don't come up with a overall reduction of noise, not, you know, we don't add any noise, but we, we achieve an overall reduction of noise. I don't think that, I think we've had enough public testimony indicating that there's a problem, an existing problem with noise, without the landscaping business, to say that, okay, that's, that's your baseline. I think that we, what we're going to do is, in my view, going to reduce the amount of noise below, significantly below what it is now.
Existing levels, that would certainly be a goal. I mean, absolutely, that, if we can reach that, that'd be fantastic, because that only benefits everybody.
I think that, I think that is our goal.
So all we have to do is figure out how we create those conditions and what those mitigation requirements would be, and then see what that looks like, so. So are we comfortable stopping at this point and continuing our discussion on October eighth? Tim and I will go back and try and incorporate what we've discussed and identify where there's still outstanding questions that we have to determine, and obviously, we need to look at the drainage, figure out how we put that in. If you think of anything between now and our next meeting, please forward it directly to Tim, so he can put it in.
And if there's any materials that you recollect from the various hearings that we've had that you don't have on you and you need, just let me know.
Yeah, exactly.
Emily, could you just identify for us what the, will we get through this?
Yeah, what the process is after that.
What happens, who's writing the permit, and what the expected next steps are.
So, we can talk about who's writing the permit. It could be that, I mean, obviously, the draft permit. I think the goal is to come up with a set of conditions that we would feel that we would want to impose upon the applicant if we granted the special permit. If we're all in agreement on those conditions, then that's great. We could move forward to discussing the other items that would be in the application. If we're not in agreement, that indicates a problem, and we have to figure out what that would be. I will also, in the intervening period between now and our next meeting, I will look at the rest of what a special permit can, should contain, because there's more than just the conditions. There's our findings and some other aspects. So I'll come up with that list and present it to you at our next meeting, so we're aware of the next steps and what those items would be, and then we'll go forward from there. I would, I think Tim and I could probably, if we get to the point where we're looking at drafting a special permit, I think Tim and I can do that. Actually, in identifying what else is needed, it effectively comes up with an outline for that, and we can discuss it. If we feel that at some point, somebody else needs to take over the drafting, I'm happy to also talk about that as well. So, but let's at least get to that point. So I would say effectively, I could have the outline, just by dint of having to see what else is in it by the next meeting, so.
What else is on October eighth?
I don't, do we have anything on October eighth? Ah, yes, of course, the, the people that we, so it's going to be a busy night on October eighth. So, I think some of the zoning, we can get through tonight in a fairly rapid fashion. I have a report to make to you guys based on what happened in the warrant committee. So after we decide that we're going to move this on to the eighth, I'll give that update. And then, Paul Sullivan's stay. Okay, there you are, behind there. And Paul has a very quick, yes, Paul? Presentation he'd like to make, so. So I think moving this forward to the eighth, there's no time, because it's not a continuation of public hearing, but obviously, I suspect we'll do three-thirty-three Brushhill Road, because of the number of people that came tonight first, and then we'll do this as our next item, so. Ned, I would just say that, you know, obviously, you've heard questions that the board has had. If your clients have any information that they'd like to put forward, please give it to Tim. If you have any questions on the process, obviously, you can give me a call, and I'm happy to talk about the process. So, yeah, thank you. Thank you all for attending. Paul, you've been waiting so patiently, why don't you give us your quick update, and then we'll do some zoning discussions?
So, good evening, I'm Paul Sullivan, Smith Road, and I'm working with Charles Cassano, who's the owner of the property. And the property is five-ninety-one Blue Hill Avenue. It's a former nursery, landscape construction site. I think the last time it operated was probably in the nineties. The property contains a little over sixty-four thousand square feet. And they actually took it to the Board of Appeals, I think it was two thousand thirteen. I'm not sure if you're aware of it, but under resident Azoni, by special permit, you can go to the Board of Appeals if you have a lot that's greater than sixty-four thousand square feet, but less than eighty thousand square feet. You can seek a special permit to create two-thirty-two thousand square foot lots. So that's what I did, and I did get the approval from the Board of Appeals, subject to conditions, including planning board approval of the, the access and frontage. So, then, it didn't go too much further than that for a while. But I'd like to have the planning board consider a two-lot subdivision there. And the way I'm addressing the frontage, and there's two issues there, is if you put a road in that, just a standard road, it's going to eat up a lot of square footage, so you lose the thirty-two thousand square foot lots. You're going to lose one of them anyways. So, the concept I came up with is, and it's actually very similar to what I did at six-fourteen and six-ten Brushhill Road. That's why I gave you this Sessas map, because in the upper part, if you follow that twenty-foot right-of-way, which is called Perkins Lane, it goes up to Brushhill Road. And a few years ago, maybe ten or so, I bought the property at six-fourteen, and through a couple different tries, and finally figured out, I came to the planning board and we created a two-lot subdivision. The house in the rear is at six-ten, is about a sixty thousand square foot lot. And its frontage and access was down the twenty-foot row, which I improved. I paved it fourteen-foot private way. And so I'm proposing a similar concept. In one of the packet I gave, I gave, the original lot was created in nineteen-twenty-nine. And if you look at it, it's made up of two lots, Lot A and Lot B. So Lot A is fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-four square feet. Lot B is on the, on the left side of the property, and it's, it's approximately just under seventeen feet wide. And it contains sixty-seven hundred and sixty-seven square feet. It abuts the twenty-foot right-of-way, which is known as Perkins Lane. And so I thought it was a natural fit to use that strip of land to create the private lane that would go to the Lot Two, the Lot in the rear. And it would also butt Perkins Lane, which is a twenty-foot right-of-way. So the combination would be greater than thirty-five foot. So, the Lot Two would be the owner of the, the new way. It would be the only user. There's two curb cuts on the property right now, so the private way would come out in the existing curb cut on the left side of the property, and then the, the house on Lot One, which is a front house, which would derive its frontage from Brushhill, uh, Blue Hill Avenue. Not just the private way, but out here. There's an existing curb cut here, and I would use that for the driveway of that house as well. So you'd end up with two thirty-two thousand square foot lots. So I could go back then to the Board of Appeals, provided I can create a subdivision, two-lot subdivision, that the planning board is satisfied with, and then seek to renew the special permit. I think it may have expired now, I think this.
It was a while ago, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's two years that the permit's good for, and so it would have to be renewed, which, which is fine. So, you know, as, if you've driven by the property, it's a pretty rundown building, two buildings there. There's a garage, and there's the old greenhouse and nursery building. They used to have a retail shop there, they used to sell out of, the greenhouse, all the glass is broken. Especially this past winter, it even got in worse condition than it was already in. I previously tried to seek approval for three lots up there, and I met a lot of the neighbors and. and I haven't gone back to them yet to discuss it again, but, you know, my feeling was that, you know, a two-lot would be satisfactory to the group there. Even the three-lot, they didn't have much of a problem with it was where the roadway was located. Originally, it was located on the right side, so now I'm proposing the left side. And between where the private ways and Perkins Lane, there's a wooden strip here all the way down that would remain, which is mostly on the abutters property. So it'd be a pretty good, a real good buffer there down the lane. And there's sewer and water in the street out front and the, you know, the neighborhood is made up of, on Vos Hill, it's mostly 10,000 square foot lots. And then on the property that's on the north side, it's 608 Brush Hill Road, there's a little private lane that, they all have Brush Hill Road addresses. And you can see on the assesses plan, you know, there's four lots, I think, on that and they're all relatively small. The property is 600 Brush Hill, is the Hagerty's property, is the largest property. It's 2.2 acres. And then it's the Adams' property where I built the house at 610. They have approximately 60,000 square feet. And then they're the abutters on that side.
All right. Any questions? Yeah.
I have two questions. Actually, three questions or three comments. On Lot One, hopefully, there'd be an effort to orient that house towards Blue Hill Avenue from a visual standpoint. I'd also...
That is, I'm sorry.
I think it's clear.
This is the front of the house.
Yep.
This is, you know.
Right. My next comment, my, I made the first comment because of my second comment. I'd love to see that curb cut go away. So if there's a way to feed that, feed the driveway for Lot One off the private way, I'd love to see the curb cut eliminated.
Sure.
And then, I'd also, to the extent that there's gonna be families in those houses, it would be great if we could continue the sidewalk that runs down Vos Hill Road just over to your private way, provide pedestrian access there.
Sure. Yeah.
Cheryl, yes.
What is the width of the private way and does it provide adequate access for a fire department to that lot?
It would be similar to what was built on the upper part of Perkins Lane, on the 20-foot right-of-way that's on the left side. The road up there was 14 feet wide with gravelled. I think we had two feet of gravel on each side or a foot and a half. So, and that was discussed with the fire department at the time. They determined they wanted a combination of the gravel edge and the paved area to be total, I think it was 18 feet.
So have you spoken to the fire department yet about the width of this private way?
I haven't yet, no. But, you know, right now, it's Service One Home and they also have access down Perkins Lane right now. They can drive through from Brush Hill Road all the way down to Blue Hill Avenue.
On Perkins Lane.
Yeah, on the 20-foot right-of-way.
Bill?
Paul, under the, you have an agreement to provide easement that went with the Hagertys?
Yes.
And it says that, so that so much of the existing easement that abuts or is located on or over the Hagerty property and continuing over the Hagerty parcel through Blue Hill Ave shall be abandoned and not used for right-of-way, either of the lots shown in the Board of Appeals Plan. So that's Hagerty and, so that abandons that right-of-way. How do you continue a road that has been abandoned?
Well, I'm not going on that Perkins Lane at all. All the construction would be on the strip of land that's called Lot B in the 1929 Plan.
But you're trying to extend that driveway and call us Perkins Lane.
No, I think he's doing it parallel to Perkins Lane.
That's where he's getting his frontage, right?
The zoning requires 150 feet of frontage and I just don't see where your second lot gets its frontage from.
Sure, it's shot about 10 or 15 feet.
No, it's supposed, I mean, the plan says it's supposed to be a 50-foot layout and this private way that you've got, I mean, if you look at this nice color plan, you can see that Perkins Lane is, doesn't actually touch, or the paved area doesn't touch your lot. And I beg the other right to use Perkins Lane?
They both said, I could claim frontage on it. The Adams own the upper part, so from this property line right here, the Adams own all that's a Brush Hill Road. They own their paved private roadway, belongs to their, it's part of their square footage. It's where their frontage was created.
All right. So it's part of their lot and do you have a right to use it?
No, I'm not seeking to use it. I'm not going on the...
I understand, but you're saying it's your frontage.
No, I'm saying the frontage is being created just like it was created in the upper part, on Perkins Lane.
He's saying he's not using this.
I understand that, but this is the lot that needs 150 feet of frontage, not this lot.
Okay, you're saying that's his frontage there, yeah.
It has to be on Perkins Lane if you're gonna have 150 feet of frontage.
Well, this isn't a driveway. I'm creating a private way is what I'm doing. It's almost exactly...
It has to be, private or public, it has to be frontage on the street. And it could be a private street, but the private street is constructed the same way as you construct a public street. It just isn't owned by the town.
And you don't have frontage on the private way?
And you don't have frontage on Perkins Road and your private way is only 10 feet wide?
No, it's 17. It's 16-point something. It's almost 17.
17 feet wide. I mean, we've, I don't think we've ever authorized a street of only 17 feet.
18's been our limit.
No, that's 18 paved.
18 paved, yeah. Did we go down to 12 on somebody?
A layout of 17 feet would be a quite a precedent.
And it abuts the 20-foot right-of-way, which was the, how did the lot get created, how did the frontage get created on the upper lot?
But Bill says it's been abandoned.
Perkins, but it doesn't mean to...
No, it's, I don't believe it's abandoned.
It's 217 feet, right?
All right, so, so...
Can I explain the agreements that I made with...
There's a...
All right. Paul, it's gonna be a quick presentation.
Yes.
And I'm sensing that there's a lot of unanswered questions, so...
I'd just like, if Alex could explain to me what the frontage is for 610 Brush Hill Road.
For 610?
How is that different than what I'm proposing here?
Pre-1938. Or pre the requirement in 58 for frontage on the street.
You'd have to check this one.
It's probably, it's probably pre-1958.
Does the road existed prior to that?
I don't know.
The building, you would have to check the age of the building.
No, I know it did exist prior to zoning, that road. So since that road existed prior, is that why you're saying it can be used as frontage?
No, I, look, if you have rights to use that street, we're gonna wanna know that for that lane. And then we can, if you have rights to it, to use it, Perkins Lane, then we can, we can talk. If you don't have rights to use it, deeded rights to use it, you can't use it as frontage. You can't even arguably use it as frontage.
One final question. If Hagerty agrees that I can butt this 17-foot strip to Perkins and he agrees that we can claim frontage on Perkins, but the access is gonna be the private way that's joining it, is that something that...
You know, if Hagerty says you can use Perkins to make a 37-foot wide way, but you can't use it as part of the way, you have to construct the paved portion entirely on your own 17 feet, I'm not sure that that's a precedent we want to pursue. But you can ask him.
Yeah, I just think it's different if it's connected to that 20-foot right-of-way.
Is that stone wall that's shown on this plan still exist?
Between the 20-foot right-of-way and, yes.
Paul, I think you need to go back and rethink it.
That is a little bit of a problem.
For me, it is, yeah.
Yes.
So... Stone wall here and a separate drive.
Coming up.
But I'm not on the button.
All right, so zoning. Actually, we have two items left. One is, if you remember at the beginning, one of the gentlemen who spoke wanted to know if we would write a letter to the applicant for the site plan approval at 333 Brush Hill Road and let him know he wasn't allowed to do what he was allowed, not what he was trying to do. Guys, I know you're still on this, but we need to move... So we had a request to write a letter at the beginning of the meeting from the planning boards to the applicant for the site plan approval to say, don't start work without the site plan approval. Let's keep it, let's keep Alex from handing it up.
I think that we should ask the building inspector to put his cease and desist order in writing and send it off to the, send it off to the...
Yes.
The owner and contractor, whoever it is who should receive it, because the building inspector is the person with the enforcement's power. We can send a letter, but...
We don't even have a permit to refer to.
It should go certified.
Yes, agreed.
And I do, can the abutters or neighbors in question be copied on it? Particularly the two or three that are directly affected by it?
I think the two or three that are directly affected by it should be copied on it. I think that makes sense.
Or it might be, it may be a blind copy, but they can certainly receive a copy of the cease and desist order.
Yeah, so they, that they are aware and they can pull it out if somebody shows up.
So they can show it to policemen.
So a formal request, the building commissioner, that he follow up with a written cease and desist order.
Yeah, I'd CC the abutters showing a lot of it because that way, the guy that gets a lot of those people across the land, they also have a copy of this. They know you've been told not to do this.
The order is a legal thing and CCing people who have no standing on a legal thing.
But I think they could receive, they don't have to be CCed, they can get copies.
Alex, do you know if a cease and desist order or something that the police department can enforce?
I think that the building inspector, I think that they call the police, they show them the cease and desist order and the police will, in fact, enforce it. Don't you think that's the case, Bill?
On most reasonable developers, because they don't get another building permit, so yes.
Right.
He's already said, I'm not doing anything until at least the 9th of October, so.
I think, I think it would've been nicer if he waited for the site plan approval before starting work, but, you know, a little bit more appropriate.
We should do something, but we don't have any enforcement power, so I think we need to request a...
So I think the formal request, the building commissioner, and did the woman who spoke first, Bill, did she give you her telephone number before she left?
No.
So, you know, then I would just let her know that we're going to make a formal request and just state that it's because the building inspector has the enforcement power, not us. So that's, that's what we can do. All right, zoning, quick update, because I know we're getting late. Two things. One, obviously, I've asked you for your top three priorities for going forward to January. Keep that in mind. I met with the warrant committee. The amplified music bylaw is being sent back to us. They found that it had some problems that were not addressable under the scope of the article. And so they're going to recommend that it be sent back to the planning board. I personally am fine with that because I think it gives us a chance to address it for the January submittal. We can throw that into the mix. On the non-conforming dimensions, I was there, Bill was also there for both of these. Ned Corcoran and Marion McCattrick were there as well to present their views. If you remember, Ned had actually been the one who originally brought this up with the board. The chair of the warrant committee had met with the building inspector, building commissioner, actually, and they'd gone back and forth. The building commissioner wasn't quite sure it was solving the problem. He thought it was solving. Marion wasn't sure, was sure it wasn't solving the problem, she thought it was solving. So the warrant committee had asked, the warrant committee chair had asked town council to look at some of the changes that the warrant committee had wanted to do, some of the changes that Marion and Ned had suggested and see whether or not they were within the scope of the article. So at the moment, and I believe the warrant went to press today, or it's going to press, it's going to press tomorrow, at the moment, the warrant committee has recommended, no recommendation at time pending town council's review on scope. I actually got that letter about two minutes before tonight's meeting started and town council's ruled that the changes are out of scope based on what the warrant committee said at the meeting and what the warrant committee chair told me after the second meeting, which I was not able to tend because I had something else that night. I would expect the warrant committee to send that back to us for further review. Again, I think doing that allows us to address it for January, so I would put that back in the mix. So I don't know if you guys want to talk about all the zoning articles now or think about it. Obviously, once the warrant committee has come up with its final recommendation, which they couldn't do tonight, because they also would've received that minutes before our meeting started, we will have a formal vote on whether or not we wish to accept the warrant committee's recommendation, because of course, we don't have to. But just to let you know, their recommendation allows us to bring it back in January. As to that, I don't know if you have initial three priorities for January? Yes, Alex?
I think we should do signs.
Okay, so signs is the top one.
And I think we should do signs in a split format.
Okay.
We should do business signs, we should do residential signs, and we should do sign procedure, all...
Sign of what?
Sign procedure.
Okay.
All of, and so that if one goes, you know, if there's a problem with one, then we can, we can at least get the others.
Okay. Brian, do you have a...
I'm okay with signs.
Okay.
I would really like to see bed and breakfasts go forward. I'm continuing to see homes come on the market here that I am concerned will lose from our, from our stock. I saw today, I saw yesterday that the Salt and Slough House is back on the market and I know that the Forbes House is not selling. That's another home with significant bedrooms and bathrooms. I just, I hate, would hate to see these homes. There's no provision for condos. It seems like we're a long way off and there's a lot more work to be done on those. So the bed and breakfast seems like a really good opportunity to preserve, potentially preserve some of these homes. And I also believe that from, you know, from my conversations and what I've heard, it seems like it's a, it's a bylaw that would gain support with the right construction and terms behind it.
All right. Cheryl?
Similar to what we heard from the gentleman tonight about citizens petitions, I do think we need to address those. So I'm gonna go beyond three to four. I think that the noise and the lighting, you know, that gentleman came to us last year at the warrant committee. I remember talking to him and the discussion and the frustration that they have. And I do think that, you know, he expressed it tonight, so I think those are things we need to address.
In that case, I'm going to make a point to talk to town council. I'll email him tomorrow and clarify what the Dover amendment is on those two, because I think if we go forward, we need to know that before we put any more efforts into it. But that's a very good point. He was very passionate about it. As he alluded to, I met with him, I think, this spring. I went over with Ann Marie Fagan to see what the issues were and he had pictures. Unfortunately, the night was not one that Curry had something on, but certainly, it would be worth going back at that time. So I'll check in with town council on that. Yeah?
On noise, I think we should give some real thought to what's included in that. Some of the feedback I've heard on the noise article in particular is that it didn't, it didn't cover enough.
Yeah.
And that if we're gonna spend the time working on a noise ordinance, we should be looking at things like beef blowers and construction hours and those type of things. So food for thought. I'm not sure where I come out on that, but I think it's something we need to think about is what we actually wanna talk about with noise. Do we wanna focus on Curry or is this something that we wanna start looking at on a townwide basis?
I think also...
And that could be a free slope, obviously.
I think also, to that point, we should consider, and to Alex's point earlier this year when he was looking at the amplified music, do noise and lighting go in as zoning bylaws or do they go in as general bylaws? And if they're general bylaws, does this Dover amendment have the same effect or not? So that's something else I gotta explore with town council.
That's an interesting point.
Yeah.
I have them occasionally.
I like that. That's really good.
One thing I'll mention is that, you know, for example, Boston's Article 80 approval...
One thing I'll mention is that, you know, for example, Boston's Article 80 approval process, which is their zoning process, includes requirements for noise in that process.
Mm-hmm.
So it's not unprecedented, you know, to have noise be a part of the zoning approval.
Although Boston has, the BRA has significant powers that a plain old planning board does not, so that's worth looking at, too.
But, you know, the noise that I've mostly come across is equipment-related noise.
As we did with Fagan, absolutely.
Which is unrelated, which is, you know, not something atypical, you know. So I'd say that, you know, where we talked about the restaurant in East Milton Square and noise, you know, everything in Milton is close to residential neighbors. That's just the nature of the town. So I do think, you know, we need to think about noise beyond the instance of the Curry College that we've been made aware of, you know. But as we hope we have continue, you know, like businesses that do well, I mean, are there opportunities for those businesses, you know, to continue to grow? We want to make sure that the impact on the neighbors, you know, gets reviewed.
Yeah. And we've certainly had noise come up as issues in other special permits. Mike, what have you, what are you thinking on zoning? Do you have a preference?
The ones that have been brought up, oh, we should need to look at, because of the point that Cheryl made, and that is, you know, citizens out there are asking us to do something relative to a topic, and they should be the priorities. Focus our attention on it.
And noise can be big. Noise is big. I mean, I went and, I looked at noise in general, and determined that I would address amplified music. And I'll be interested to see what their, their problem is, but I can, I can guess. In any event, noise is big, signs are big. Light is probably, light, if we include illumination of signs, is big.
Yes. And these are relatively small in comparison.
And the other two, I mean, that's a plateful.
Wait, I, what, what do we have the other two? I have signs, B and B, noise, lighting.
Oh, and the B and B, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I feel, and we could talk about it. I think, I think we're, we could potentially be close on B and B. I think we should have another conversation about it. Maybe we decided it is too much to bite off, but, but it's just, it's, for me, it's a, it's a real function of what happens.
If we can define how to do it without, you know, just saying anyone who wants to become an inkeeper can do so.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, more definition, Tom, yeah.
I mean, if we can, if we can, I know the Bartols, for instance, who have a big old place, at one point, were thinking B and B, and, you know, there's a place for it.
I agree.
But it's not everywhere.
No, I think some sort of definition. So what I want to say is, we have time between now and January to look at these. I think we should start with these four, and then it may be, again, one of them drops out, but at least we can start with these four and look at them. Let me consider a little bit the process, ask you guys to consider the process as well. I think we will want at least one public hearing, or not public hearing, one public meeting. Cheryl made the mention, or the suggestion at the last meeting, that maybe the public meeting gets devoted to one item at a time, which I think is a good one, because clearly, seven at a single public meeting is a really bad idea.
Yeah.
Great for introducing them all, not so good for getting down to the discussion.
I agree.
Yeah, so, so let's all have a thought about how we'll do the process. Tim, you had a hand up and a suggestion?
You said four, bed and breakfast, noise, lighting, signs. Is non-conforming dimensions so tantalizingly close?
Well-
I, it could be. We can, let's put it on the list for now and see what the warrant committee says. It may, Marion gave a lot of information to me, which I will make sure gets forwarded on to you, because I'm not sure all of it has. The warrant committee had some suggestive language that they'd worked out partially at the first meeting and partially at the second meeting, so we can look at that and see if it's worthwhile using. So let's add that, because to Brian's point about B and B, we may be close enough that adding those two, and we may be close enough on non-conforming, that it wouldn't be too much heavy lifting between now and January. So that's a good point. We should at least look at it and see where it is, and then go from there. All right, so I think we've hit everything on the agenda. Any other?
Was there the implementation committee?
Oh, that's the plan implemented, thank you, yes. I thought there was something, but I couldn't quite put my finger on it. So obviously, we need to appoint some other members. We've got Cheryl, we've got Katie from the Board of Selectmen. There are three other members that need to be appointed, so I was talking with the Selectmen's office, and they are doing a big outreach, actually, we can announce it here at 10 o'clock at night. They're doing a big outreach to fill a bunch of positions on a bunch of committees that are open in town. So they've got a program where they're doing that. They've got a form that people can fill out. They're going to Celebrate Milton on October 5th to hand out the form and try and sign people up for all the different volunteer positions. So I said, "Put the master plan implementation committee on that," because that allows us to reach a wider range of people, and let's see who comes back who's interested, and then we can look at that there.
Especially the master plan implementation, try, should try to reach some of these community groups.
Yes. Actually, that's a good idea. The next time we send out a blast, which may be before, because we're meeting after, why don't we see what comes back from Celebrate Milton? Because we're meeting after that. And then I like that idea. Put a blast out to, an even mild blast out to the neighborhood groups and the other groups that we've identified.
They have people that seem to represent a little bit of a contingency, so.
Yeah. And we only have three people to appoint this year, but that doesn't mean we can't keep them. Plus, anybody who says that they're interested, we can add to our list for keeping forward, too. But it'd be nice to get that out. So, okay, great idea. Anything else?
I can, I can get my hands on that form also. It's like a general, like, town-wide, "Do you want to volunteer for a committee?" form. Send it out, and you can all tell all your friends.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Was there a particular skill set that we were looking for? I was trying to remember from the article that was approved.
I think we wanted people who had some backgrounds, but there's, there is a role for people who are general citizens that are interested. Obviously, a planning background never hurts, says the person with a planning background. But I don't think we should rule somebody else. I think there were some. I don't remember what they were off the top of my head, but that doesn't necessarily mean we should rule somebody out who doesn't have it, so. But let's see who comes back who's interested. Anything else for tonight?
We adjourn.
Second.
All in, what, minutes? Do them at the, at the next meeting. Sorry. I believe Alex had some comments.